Good evening and welcome to the Town of Rockport Fall Town Meeting. I note for the record, a quorum being present, the meeting is called to order. First, 22 years ago this morning, criminals sent by the terrorist syndicate Al Qaeda attacked the United States and murdered over 3,000 Americans in New York City, Washington DC, and Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Rockport's own first responders, our public safety departments, will now lead us all in remembering that day. First, we will have an invocation from Reverend Nathan Ives, Assistant Chief, Rockport Fire Department, and pastor of St. Peter's Episcopal Church in Salem, Massachusetts, followed by Return to Quarters striking the bell, and then taps played by Nancy Warner, Rockport Parking Control Officer. Reverend Ives?
Good evening. Please stand if you're able. Let us pray. Most loving God of all creation, we are made in your image and blessed with the gift of life. Part of that amazing gift is the gift of memory and empathy, and the desire to honor those who have served, loved, cared for, or died for us. We gather today to remember the thousands of innocent civilians, and the sacrifice who died, and the sacrifice of 343 New York City firefighters, 71 law enforcement officers, 55 military personnel, one U.S. Fish and Wildlife officer, and one FBI special agent who were killed on September 11th, 2001. Many of whom voluntarily jumped into action that fateful day to save the lives of strangers. They represent the very best of human loving and self-offering. Bless their families and friends, oh God, and let them rest in peace in your loving embrace, as we promise never to forget the gift of themselves, their very lives, to those in need of rescue. Strengthen us all, dear God, with the strength and wisdom and skill to do whatever it takes to fulfill our call in service to our neighbors and strangers alike, as they did so wholeheartedly. And bless our nation with wisdom and grace, as we strive to make this nation a place of peace and respect and appreciation for one another. Amen. We will now have the striking of the bell for the call sign Return to Quarters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you to our first responders for helping us reflect on the importance of that day. Thank you. Please remain standing, attend the nation's flag, and kindly recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance, and then remain standing for the invocation from Reverend Van Golden. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by the Reverend Derek Van Golden of the Rockport First Congregational Church and Senior Chief Petty Officer, United States Navy, retired.
Would you join me in a moment of prayer? Holy One, known by many different names by so many, and no name by as many as well, we ask you to bless our town meeting today with unity, hope, and vision, to build in us all a deep respect for one another, so that our beloved Rockport may continue to grow and thrive as an inclusive and welcoming community. Help us to remember that there is always a both-and way of looking at things. And may all of us gathered here listen with open ears and hearts, be kind in all our words, and work together for the good of Rockport, our beloved community. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Van Golden. May be seated. Thank you so much. The first order of business is the reading of the warrant. The chair will entertain a motion to omit reading the warrant articles. Anybody make that move and second it? This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion to omit reading the warrant articles say aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries. That was easy. I would now ask the town clerk to read the officer's return of service on the warrant.
I, Michael J. Foot, Constable for the Town of Rockport, have on this date, August 28th, 2023, posted the Fall Town Meeting warrant for the Fall Town Meeting to be held Monday, September 11th, 2023, at 5:30 PM at the high school, Rockport High School, in the two post offices, the Town Bulletin Board, and 17 other public places throughout the town, including three in Precinct 1, three in Precinct 2, and three in Precinct 3. Signed, Michael J. Foot, Constable of the Town of Rockport. Received Monday, August 28th, 2023, Town Clerk's Office. Rockport, Mass. 01966, at 12:32 PM. Signed, Melanie J. Waddell, Town Clerk.
Some general announcements. There are refreshments, I'm informed, specifically donuts kindly donated out in front of the hall. Restrooms are to the right and left, I believe gentlemen are to the right, and ladies are to the left as you exit, if I got that right. And then finally, as you've all heard, every town meeting with the school department, we're guests of the school department, let's all work together to keep the facilities clean, and you are thanked for that effort. I hope everyone had an opportunity to read the brief letter included in the voter's booklet, i.e. in that letter, and again, we'll now thank Bob Visnick for his, not only his service to the town, but his patience with working with me over the summer, and I hope that we're able to proceed smoothly. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, as adapted to town meetings, and as modified by the laws of the Commonwealth. I'll briefly summarize our expected procedure. First, let's be civil to one another. Everyone here has taken time out of their busy lives because we care about the town and want to be part of an informed, rational, and productive meeting, and I'm sure that will be the case. Second, we presume everyone has read the warrant. As many of you know, the warrant gives notice to the town of the issues to be addressed at town meeting. Warrant articles are not self-executing. Once the meeting starts, the meeting deals with motions made during the meeting, technically not the warrant articles in and of themselves, except as referenced by the motion made on the floor of the meeting. Motions will be made based on the warrant articles as main motions, which require a second. Most motions will be announced by the town administrator to my left, along with the recommendations to town meeting of any cognizant boards and committees. Once a motion has been made, if there's a second to the motion, that motion is before the meeting, and the floor is open to discussion. The chair will first recognize the sponsor, who will have up to 10 minutes to speak to the merits of the motion. After the sponsor or sponsors, any town meeting member, i.e. any registered voter in attendance, may be recognized and speak for up to five minutes on the pending motion. If you want to speak, please gain the moderator's attention by raising your hand or otherwise. After I call on you, please state your name and residential address for the record, and make your remarks. All comments and remarks are addressed to the chair and should relate to the immediate question on the floor. I will warn you if you are approaching your limit, so that you may focus your argument and conclude your remarks. We cannot have conversations. Questions and answers are technically not in order. I will try to use my judgment on that, but the meeting cannot devolve into a series of questions and answers to board, supporters, opponents, or other members. So-called debate in a deliberative body is not like an argument on T-Warp about the Patriots game last night. The goal is to hear from all members wishing to speak. Per the town's bylaws, to promote full and robust discussion, the preference will be to recognize members who have not yet spoken on an issue. A member will not ordinarily be recognized more than twice to speak on a particular issue during the meeting. With that in mind, I intend to return to the sponsor toward the end of discussion, if that is feasible, and if matters requiring clarification have arisen. But again, the meeting cannot devolve into a back-and-forth argument. With that in mind, I would ask all sponsors of all motions to pay close attention to the discussion, so matters which require clarification can be directly and clearly spoken to when the sponsor is again recognized by the chair, if I'm able to do so. Discussion must only address the pending motion, so for example, if a main motion is being discussed and a member makes a motion to amend the main motion, the motion to amend becomes the pending motion, and only discussion on the proposed amendment is in order until the meeting votes on the amendment, and only then will we return to the main motion. There are other matters which can displace the main motion, however, it isn't realistic to recite all the procedural details now, but I will try my best to ensure the meeting understands the pending motion at all times. When discussion is done, we'll proceed to vote on the pending motion. Once we make that transition, further discussion on the pending motion is not in order and won't be recognized. Let me say that again. Once discussion is closed, further discussion on the pending motion is not in order. That happens when either the moderator senses the meeting is ready to vote, or a member on the floor makes a motion to move the previous question, which is commonly known as a motion to end discussion or end debate. The first path to end discussion. If I sense you're ready to vote, I will state this, and then restate the motion. I won't state this unless I really believe that you, as a group, are ready to vote, and no member is actively trying to gain the floor. I will provide fair notice and warning, so no one is surprised. My goal is to have no surprise meeting. The second path to end discussion is a motion to move the previous question. If that is made and seconded. Four simple but important points to keep in mind on any motion to move the previous question, i.e. a motion to end debate. First, you can't just yell it out. That's not in order and won't be acted upon. You must have the floor to move the previous question. In other words, I must have recognized you to speak. Second, once made by a member with the floor and seconded, it is not a debatable motion. We'll move immediately to voting. I will restate the motion to move the previous question or end debate, and we will vote, almost certainly by electronic means. Third, such a motion requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds vote. I know this is second nature to many of the people in attendance, but I thought it might be useful to go over some of these things. The principle is that, no matter how strong people's views are on the issue, if two-thirds of the meeting, the people in this room, the voters in this room, want to end discussion and vote on the issue, it's time to end discussion and vote on the issue. And then fourth, with that in mind, I would ask any member to consider, before moving to end discussion, whether there have been issues raised by your fellow members during discussion, but we have not yet returned to the sponsor to address those. I can't and won't stop you from bringing the motion, but I do ask that you remain mindful of this point before making it. As for voting, we will use electronic voting frequently. I expect on any motion to move the previous question, on any motion which is likely to be a close vote. In the interest of respecting your time and promoting an efficient meeting, I will from time to time use a voice vote or hand vote for matters which I believe are not close votes, but which legally require a vote of the meeting, for example, as we just did with waiving the reading of the warrant. These procedures are not to cause frustration or make anybody feel like they're living in a Franz Kafka novel, but rather to promote clarity, fairness, and efficiency. By our bylaws, articles are drawn randomly by the town clerk. For tonight's meeting, I have determined that Articles C, D, and E, all concerning Community Preservation Committee actions, reports, and projects are related, and that Articles F through O, all concerning bylaw changes with a similar format and structure, are related. And finally, that Articles R and S, concerning Department of Public Works financing, are also related. In the interest of time, efficiency, and considering the unique calendar governing community preservation funding, and the unique nature of the expected motions on both the CPC and the Code of Bylaw issues, absent objection, I propose we take those articles out of the lottery system and take them up now in that order. Specifically, the Community Preservation Issues, C, D, and E, to be followed by the Bylaw Issues, F, G, J, H, and I, then K through O. Is there any objection to proceeding in that fashion? And just to be clear, is there an objection? Okay. Thank you. Hearing no objection, the meeting will first consider any motion under Articles C, D, and E to be followed by F, G, J, H, and I, then K through O. And before we begin, I'd ask you to join me in recognizing our senator in the state Senate, the General Court for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Senator Bruce Tar, who is seated, I believe, up in the visitor section to my notes, right down here. Welcome, Senator Tar.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves at the town here and receives the report of the Community Preservation Committee. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded.
Right off the bat. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Ruth George, and I am the chairperson of the Rockport Community Preservation Committee. I am presenting tonight in accordance with the Town of Rockport Bylaw, Chapter 2, Section 6D. This calls for recommendations to be made at town meeting. We will later hear about the applications that we are presenting to you tonight, the voters, for approval in spending your CPC dollars. First, I would like to do a quick recap of CPC and the Town of Rockport. You, the voters, voted in CPC in our town 20 years ago, this month, or whenever. This is the first CPC application was voted on in the spring of 2003, and that was for $101,477.58 for the row parcel of Wadashet up behind the school and golf course. CPC is overseen by the Department of Revenue. It is made up of mandatory town board members, and we have four appointed by the moderator. It's a nine-member board. Currently, we have Housing Authority Bethany Rosnen, Conservation Commission Ashley Shed, DPW Representative Aaron Battistelli, who is the vice chair, Planning Board Member Peter Cutner, Historic Commission Ken Kaiser, and moderator-appointed members Mel Michaels, who is the treasurer, John Hartle, Larry Neal, and myself, Ruth George, who is the chair. We also are assigned a Board of Selectmen Liaison, Herman Lilia. We meet monthly. Right now, we've been on Zoom since through the pandemic. Funds only can be used if they fall into one of three or four categories: affordable housing, historic preservation, open space, and recreation. Rockport voted to do CPC at 3%, and weren't we smart? So far, Rockport has realized approximately, estimated for the 2024, $15,209,194. That's annual revenues and matching funds from the state. Just think, we've spent all of that in town, in Rockport, on wonderful projects. Tonight, if approved... Tonight, if approved, you will add an additional $552,950 to that number, leaving CPC with a balance going forward of $1,156,000. We always like to leave money on the table. This year, we didn't have as many applicants that went through the whole process, and I'll review that in a little while. This year, 2022, 23, I want to talk about what we have done and why. We started this year having Stuart Saginaw, the Executive Director of CPC Coalition in Boston, come and review our CPC guidelines via our Zoom meeting. I think all who attended, the public and the members, really learned a lot and set us up for a good path going forward. We have had several new members since I had him come and speak many years ago. In the fall, we had a posted CPC workshop to review the application process and discuss with any groups of citizens with ideas for potential application topics, and review the application and the approved categories. We will schedule another one this November also. Our application deadline is always the first Monday in February. That is when the work really begins for the committee, reviewing applications and working with each group to see that their specific application does meet the standard under the specific category. This year, we had eight applications. I want to remind people that that application date, if you have any ideas of an application, write it up and get it submitted by that date, so it is stamped by the town clerk, and it is legitimate dated application. Even if your committee hasn't formed yet, you can always rescind it later, but it's good to get something on paper stamped in with the town clerk. Our first application that had questions was the Rockport Community Land Trust. So this year, we had eight applications. So our first application that had questions was the Rockport Community Land Trust application. And that was by a local independent nonprofit group requesting $500,000. Housing applications fall under two categories in CPC. If municipal, they can request funds and put the money into a trust fund to mount up, similar to the Conservation Commission's money that they mount up for parcels that they need. The applications under municipal and conservation, they do not need a specific piece of property to be noted, and once approved by CPC, then they come to town meeting and go to the Board of Selectmen for purchase of land. They don't come back to the town meeting. If the housing application is not municipal, like the Community Land Trust, or like Harborlite, it must designate what the property is, so you, the residents, know what that property is in their application. Then it goes forward to CPC, gets vetted, and then we bring it to town meeting. I had a Zoom meeting with Stuart Saginaw, two of the trust members, and two CPC members to discuss the difference between the two, because we hadn't dealt with a land trust coming to us. The community trust was in talks with a piece of property, but it fell through, so they pulled their application for this round of CPC funding. We encourage them to reapply in the future, hopefully 2024. Next May, when we were in our second round of reviews with the seven remaining applicants, we got an application from the Rockport Affordable Housing Municipal Trust, requesting we consider their application for $500,000. We had their chairman come and present their application for late consideration to our June 20th meeting. All committee members present, seven of us, each discussed the pros and cons, and it was finally deemed, due to being late, it was not voted in to be on this cycle, and strongly urged to reapply in this coming February cycle. Next, we had an application that progressed till the final vote to recommend a town meeting. That was one from Eric Hutchinson and Carol Chirico. I hope I'm saying her name right. Rockport Municipal Vulnerability Analysis of Recreational and Historic Resources. This was for $50,000. This amount was to be used to provide local match and support a larger application the town was doing for a mass municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. That match was already accounted for in the town's grant. I'm very pleased and happy to announce that the town was awarded the MVP grant, and the Eric and Carol's application wasn't denied, but it wasn't passed forward. It was an excellent application, and I hope that they bring it back to us, and hopefully the MVP grant, some of the things they suggest, can be done with some of the money they want to do. So it was an excellent grant. But we didn't want to say no to it, and we wanted to resubmit net cycle for ways to implement the grant funding. This year, at the request of Toby Arsenean from last year's town meeting, we began holding a yearly public hearing to review with the public all the applications before the committee at our July or August meeting, and for public input before the committee voted on their final amounts and which to proceed to Fall Town Meeting. We did it on Zoom. There wasn't a lot of participation. It was posted in the newspaper and in town hall. We will post it more and get the word out, so we get more people who can hear about the different projects ahead of town meeting. We on CPC are stewards for you, all our resident money. Everyone in the CPC committee is fully in favor of affordable housing in town and looks forward to many different housing options coming before the committee this coming cycle and into the future. Affordable housing for all, elders, family, workforce, can work together in Rockport. It is not a sprint, it's a marathon, and we are in it to support it with your CPC dollars. Tonight, we have six great applications, some from each of the permitted categories. I wanted to do a couple of shout-outs to say thank you to Phil Crady, who was our chairman for several, many years, and he has retired, and also our Historic Commission member Jim Yagon, who stepped down from that, and he's no longer with us, attending meetings. And also to Mel Michaels. He's our treasurer, and he does a lot of work every year, getting everything teed up for us and keeping us honest and everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? I sense that you're ready to vote. The most... Sorry? Yes, sir? Someone have a microphone? Do we have runners? Do we have a runner for Mr. Johnson? Thank you, Cole.
Thank you. Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. I truly appreciate the chairwoman's explanation. Almost answered everything I wanted, but you did a great job, Ruth. On the fourth item, under Article E, the $215,000, the conservation... Is that what... Are we dealing with that yet?
Not yet. I'll be getting to that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I sense the meeting is ready to vote. The motion is whether to hear, which we've done, and receive the report of the Community Preservation Committee. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. The motion carries. We move on to Article D.
Mr. Moderator, Article D, first motion. CPC Chair Ruth George moves the $83,900 to be transferred from the FY24 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen and CPC support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
This is 10% of the estimated 2024 revenues, and 10% goes into each of the three buckets: open space and recreation, historic preservation, and community housing. And that's done every year at this time. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sense the meeting's ready to vote. The motion is whether it is to transfer $83,900 from the fiscal year 24 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Reserve Account. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. We move on to Article E.
Mr. Moderator, second motion, Article D.
Oh, second motion. I apologize. Second motion.
CPC Chair Ruth George moves the $83,900 to be transferred from the FY24 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation. to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Recreation Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
Nothing, that's, again, it's the 10% of the estimated annual.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the second motion as listed on the board before the meeting, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And the third motion.
Mr. Moderator, CPC Chair Ruth George moves the $83,900 to be transferred from FY '24 Estimated Annual Revenues of the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve Account. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further comments, Ms. George? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Before we move on, I have to acknowledge, Bob Visick's very funny. I'm not very funny. I'm sorry for that. I have, as I told the selectmen, I have no good jokes for you, certainly none I can say from up here at the dais without being in the Boston Globe tomorrow, so.
Mr. Moderator, Article E, first motion. CPC Chair Ruth George moves the $27,500 to be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended under the direction of the Harbor Masters and Director of Public Works, working with the Community Preservation Committee to replace kayak racks at White Wharf for the restoration, rehabilitation, indoor preservation thereof, to be used for recreational purposes. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
Yes. This application is sponsored, as I said, by the Harbor Masters and the Harbor Department, Scott Storey and Rosemary Lesh. Kayaking has become a huge recreational sport and has increased tremendously in Sandy Bay. Currently, they store 30 kayaks on handmade racks down at White Wharf or Old Harbor, which were originally built by volunteers. With this application, they are looking to replace and double the available amount of storage, up to 60 kayaks, and added a request for additional solar lighting for safety in the area, utilizing the town's lighting bylaw. We did discuss having additional kayak locations around town, but they felt having racks at both Granite Pier and doubling the amount at Old Harbor was the best solution. Kayak requests are done through the Harbor Masters office, and they charge a per-season fee. And this falls under recreation. Thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing, yes, sir. Mr. Tobin, do we have a microphone for Mr. Tobin? Or where? Thank you, Jack.
Mr. Moderator, we're sitting on this side, and we can't really see the motion. Can anyone over on this side see them? There's no motion.
It is printed in the book. Your point's taken, but it is printed in the book, and.
Well, could we put at least a page number?
Yes, we'll certainly get you the.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, first motion, Article E. Motion is located on page 71.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin, page 71. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the motion is to appropriate $27,500 and transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended under the direction of the Harbor Masters and Director of Public Works, working with the CPC, to replace kayak racks at White Wharf for restoration. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no.
Mr. Moderator, second motion, Article E. Motion is found on page 72. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $36,000 to be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Community Open Space and Recreation Reserve Account to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, working with the Community Preservation Committee, to conduct a study to create universal nature trails on town parcels for recreational purposes. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
This is sponsored by the Town Administrator's Office, who is the ADA Coordinator, and John Lopez, the Conservation Agent. A feasibility study would be the first step in creating a universal access and shared use path trail system that would be dedicated to providing all residents and visitors equal access to the experience of outdoor recreation in Rockport, regardless of an individual's ability. If funded, the applicant's team for the study would include the development with the Right of Way Committee and KPN Trail Stewards, among others, to select the four sites for a detailed analysis and feasibility. This would also serve to ensure that the town meets and remains in compliance with ADA state and federal laws. We received letters of support from Right of Way Committee and the KPN Trail Stewards, and this would be under recreation and open space. My first question then would be, one of the great things that they should look at, and I would encourage, is not necessarily a nature trail, but opening up a beach to people in wheelchairs to get them down to the water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion?
Terry Rosallo, 4th Summit. Is there a definition for universal nature trails?
Thank you. And before we get there, just one moment. Any further discussion before we go there?
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. I too would like to know about the universal trails, and we're told equal access. That's a pious thought, and certainly we want people who are handicapped or crippled to have access to the town's open spaces and trails. Equal access is, you know, probably not possible. If you think of the Atlantic Path, the portion of it that the selectmen made a settlement on, you'd be hard-pressed if you were able-bodied to crawl over it in the winter, let alone, you know, someone who was handicapped. Also, although you want to give people access, everyone, you want to preserve the character of the trails as they now are, so it's a balancing act. If you pave everything, it's not going to be the same place. All of that seems obvious. If the money was not available, what would we do? We have the money and feel free about spending it. I think we feel too free about spending it. Could the Right of Way do the study themselves? After all, they know far more about the town's trails than any hired consultant is going to know. So that's a question for the Right of Way. I'm skeptical. I think, you know, since we have the money, we go out and hire consultants to do things that we could do ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ms. Where? Any further discussion? Ms. George?
Yes. The Right of Way Committee and the Trail Stewards and general public will be involved in this feasibility study to look at where things will be, what could be involved. It's not saying any specific things are going to be. It's a feasibility study to look at it, and it's Right of Way Committee and Trail Stewards will be very involved in it. To answer your question, Toby.
Thank you, Ms. George. I sense the meeting is ready to vote. Seeing no further discussion, the motion is whether to appropriate and transfer $36,000 from the Community Preservation Community Open Space Recreation Reserve Account to be expended under the Board of Selectmen, working with the CPC to conduct a study to create universal nature trails. Requires a majority vote, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, third motion, located on page 72. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $42,250 to be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Account to be expended under the oversight of the Department of Public Works, working with the Community Preservation Committee for the restoration, rehabilitation, indoor preservation of T-Warf Rockport and to enhance the safety, historic integrity, and appearance of the wharf and its immediate surroundings. Board of Selectmen and CPC support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
Yes. The Rockport DPW is looking for funding for the inspection, evaluation, engineering permitting, and bid phase services associated with repairs and improvements to the west portion and along the northern side that has recently developed sinkholes and wharf wall stone movement. The wharf is showing signs of significant settlement and the loss of smaller aggregate, as well as bowing out along the base of the wall. They would look to use GZA, Geo-Environmental Inc., as consultant engineers. The settlement has occurred over time with the ebb and flow of the tide pulling smaller aggregate, but is also exacerbated by storm surge and coastal storms. The repairs would look at setting up erosion control, replacing displaced stones, and refilling the wharf with aggregate to improve the overall stability of the wharf. This is similar to the evaluation of Bradley Wharf done previously using CPC funds last year. This would fall under historic preservation category and recreational.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we've heard the motion as stated by the Town Administrator and is contained on page 72 of the voter's booklet. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article E, fourth motion. Motion located on page 73. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $215,000 to be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account to be expended under the oversight of the Conservation Commission, working with the Community Preservation Committee, to be used for purposes consistent with the Community Preservation Act. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
This is sponsored by the Conservation Commission. Fund uses are for down payments on purchases of land for watershed and conservation purposes, purchase of conservation easements and conservation restrictions, and conservation easement and restrictions for right-of-way trails. The goal of the trust fund is to build up sufficient funds to provide a deposit on a major land purchase or full funding with the Board of Selectmen's approval. Money might be, and usually is, in conjunction with other entities like Essex County Greenbelt, et cetera. Some funds have been used to buy land adjacent to Flatledge Quarry, easements around wellfields, woodland acres, and the road property, to name a few, which was, and the road property was our first CPC-funded appropriation in town. Priority parcels are identified in the Rockport Open Space and Recreation Plan. Building up the trust fund will give the town the ability to act quickly in acquiring land for protection of wetlands, wildlife habitat, open spaces, and passive recreation when it goes on the market. The commission is also concerned about public accessibility to town-owned lands for recreation and enjoyment. This project falls under conservation and recreation.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson? And I would like to thank Jack Welsky and Cole Edmonds, our runners tonight, for their community service here during town meeting. Thank you both.
Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. This transferring money to the Conservation Committee for their use blindly is new to me. Years past, I can remember arguments at full town meetings as we tried to transfer monies and buy properties that the town wanted and needed. Most everything that's ever been done under the Conservation Commission purchases have been great for the town. The thing is, there's been a lot of times when they have been in dispute. And I remember they used to require, if I'm correct, a two-thirds vote of the town meeting to be able to pass. There never was a two-thirds vote required of purchasing of land at a town meeting? You were shaking your head that that's not so. Not for this?
Yeah, I was referring to, what I was talking, referring to with, when I was shaking my head, was it's not, it's not, it was never required for this type of appropriation.
Correct. But that's not the type of appropriation. Until we had CPC, the town meeting was responsible for acquiring land. Conservation Committee would come in, make a suggestion of land that they wanted to buy. Finance Committee would make a recommendation on whether they thought that it was a proper thing. The selectman would make a recommendation, and then the town meeting would vote with a two-thirds majority. I think there's an opportunity by not having the town meeting involved. And I think local participation, you got huge participation here this evening, is the best kind of government. That to leave everything up to the selectman or to the town administrator and say, you know, and I, you know, I look over there and I see people who I trust and I have great faith in. It's not an issue of that. It's an issue of the responsibility of the people of the town to be able to, if they want to buy the land. I think all the other issues under the CPC that you've covered so far have been great. And I've always thought that that's what it should be used for. You know, we can fix the harbors. We can do things like that. But to buy land that we don't know we're buying land is kind of a problem for me. And I hope that we reconsider the way we look at CPC because the next article I'll write is in opposition to it for the same reason.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And before, I'm going to get back to you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Thank you. Henry Farrar, 84 Granite Street. I somewhat agree with the previous speaker. We're actually putting considerable amount of money, $215,000. I'm not sure where the number came from, but it's a considerable amount of money under the governance of a committee that we have no say in, other than voting them on the committee or participating in it. Whereas all the other major articles put forth, we all stood up and said, yeah, that's a good idea. Oh, no, I don't think that, or how about we change this? So I am concerned about such a large pot of money putting forth in a committee that has no public oversight. And I would love to hear some way of dealing with that, I guess.
Thank you. I do believe, and we'll get this for you, that in order to actually purchase land, that does have to go to town meeting. So my understanding, and we're going to return to Ms. George to address this as well, is that that money cannot actually be used to purchase the land that does have to come to town meeting, I believe. Yes, sir, Mr. Arsenean.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. It's possible to have your cake and eat it too in this case. I think that Mr. Johnson and Mr. Farrar's concerns are reasonable. You know, it's proper that we all agree if we're buying something. The reason this was done was so that the Conservation Commission could move quickly when parcels became available. The town meeting meets twice a year, does not move quickly. You have to get a warrant article on, and the opportunity, if there is an opportunity to buy open space that would be appropriate for conservation purposes, may have passed you by. So it's a good thing that they can have the money and with the selectman's consent, spend it. They can move quickly, perhaps as quickly as somebody who might buy it privately, and then it's gone. But there's a way to have the cake and eat it too, and that would be for the Board of Selectmen after any parcel had been bought in this manner, to bring it to the town meeting for a vote. Now, we own the land. We're not going to undo that, but we could undo it. If the town meeting says that we do not endorse the purchase, approve it, we still own the land, but the selectman could then bring an article to the town meeting to give the town meeting the opportunity to sell the land, and so you can have the cake and eat it too. I think it's important that the town meeting ultimately have control, one way or another. So it's a good thing to have the money for the conservation, but I too have reservations.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. I'm going to, in a moment, turn to Town Council as well on this point. But again, in order to actually purchase land, to actually purchase land, my understanding is we're going to hear from Town Council that has to go to town meeting, and as I think Mr. Arsenian was saying. But we'll hear, we'll hear again from Council. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Monica Lawton, eleventh story street. I think that is a very important point. I think that we do need to hear from Town Council, because it is the understanding of some of us that the Conservation Commission is simply banking the money so that when there is a parcel available that's maybe desirable, they can bring it forward to town meeting for a vote on whether to buy it or not. And one of the other reasons for accumulating this fund in substantial amounts is that, as we all know, the cost of real estate is increasing very rapidly. So in order to have sufficient funds to buy a desirable parcel when it becomes available, you want to accumulate it in nice lump sums over the course of time, so it's there when you need it to act quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Brown.
It doesn't say anything about purchase of land in the motion.
Yep.
So is there somebody here from the Conservation Commission that can tell us what this fund would be used for?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And Selectman Lilia or Selectman Donnelly?
This concept is going to be before you again at some point in the future with regard to the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust. The intent is to accumulate money, accumulate money from CPC and any benefactors that would be interested in giving money to a fund that would be in the name of the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust. On purchase of land would in fact be afforded by having this money available, and the vote of the selectmen would be the consideration for the purchase. But if the town wants to have an active affordable housing trust, then they must accept the concept that the purchase of land or property for the sake of creating affordable housing is something that is beyond the reach of town meeting and entrusted to the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Selectman Lilia, Selectman Donnelly.
I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, to dispel the notion that the Conservation Commission operates without oversight. The Conservation Commission conducts public meetings, just like every other town body. So citizens always have the opportunity to attend those meetings and weigh in. And I know for a fact, as Jim Johnson said, that when there's an issue that excites a lot of people, for good or for ill, people do show up. It's also the case that should something come before the Board of Selectmen, such as the purchase of property, as occurred with woodland acres, people will have a chance to weigh in, and we will, of course, listen to you. The purpose of the Community Preservation Commission and the Act was to create opportunities for cities and towns to set aside open space. That's one of the categories, in order, in order to be able to act quickly, as has been articulated in a very hot real estate market. So it's not that this is happening in a vacuum and nobody gets to weigh in. You will get to weigh in, and this has provided the town the opportunity to set aside some really important pieces of property for the enjoyment of all.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. I'm going to ask Town Council in a moment to address the legalities of purchasing land. Any further discussion before we do that? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan McMillan, eighteen story street, a thirty-five member year, no longer active of the Conservation Commission and chair for twelve years of Conservation Commission. I'd like to thank Monica and Denise for what they said, because I don't think the town really appreciate, the people who are naysayers in this issue don't understand the importance of this. White Wharf, years ago, when I was early on the commission, White Wharf downtown, there was a hotel proposed to be on that property. And the Conservation Commission had, through CPC over the years, collected enough money that we purchased, the town purchased, White Wharf, and there's no hotel there today. So, and the person who mentioned about the cost of real estate, I think it was Denise mentioned the cost of real estate going up, that continues to happen all the time, and if we don't have this money, the Conservation Commission does not spend the money. The Conservation Commission holds the money. You will, as town residents, have the opportunity to vote what's done with that money. The Conservation Commission does not spend money itself. The Conservation Commission holds the money for a time in the future when there may be an opportunity for the town to purchase a piece of land that would otherwise go to a developer and possibly have another hotel built. But I'd just like to clarify that. The Conservation Commission does not spend the money, they hold the money. And we're voting tonight to allow the Conservation Commission, through the CPC, which we all pay into, to have the opportunity to do that. So I'd just like to clarify that. Conservation Commission does not spend the money. The Board of Selectmen, I mean, the select persons, et cetera, et cetera. You will have opportunity in the future for any spending of the money. Conservation Commission does not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. I'm going to ask Town Council to address the question on the purchase of land.
Darren Klein through the moderator. That was well said. I mean, this is to allow the Conservation Commission to hold the money, so it can be spent at a time future, and it'd be limited to being spent for conservation for purposes. But obviously, it would be the Board and ultimately town meeting, if there's any purchase of land, you would have a say in that, and it would come back to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, thank you. Laura Kozicek, two ninety-three Granite Street. I'm also the chair of the Conservation Commission. So thank you for letting me have a moment to speak, and I totally understand how some people would be very concerned about how this money would be spent and who would be making those decisions. And Selectwoman Donnelly, thank you very much for mapping that out. I think that was really clear. And thank you, Alan McMillan, for your history and comments that I think also solidified the points. The Conservation Commission would be looking for properties with the guidance of other bodies, such as the DPW, who would know which areas are going to be critical for, let's say, future needs for drinking water. So those are the kinds of things, in addition to those that you've already heard about, that the Commission will be looking into and finding adjacent properties to ones that maybe the town already owns to benefit the people of Rockport. So, and again, this is consistent with the use of what expenditures can be used for with CPC funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kozicek. And before I go, before I go back for the second time, any further discussion from anyone who hasn't yet spoken? Yes, sir.
Stephen Roulette, two Gaphead Road. I recall an incident a few years ago where the town went to purchase some property using a very small amount of Conservation Commission funds that had been provided by the town. The, there was a limitation, however, that since, since any conservation funds were used, the land could not be used for anything other than passive recreation. So maybe the Town Council could clarify this. If conservation, if CPC money is given to the Conservation Commission, is any land that they purchase with that now subject to the requirements that it be used for conservation purposes, as opposed to, for example, active recreation?
And I'll work on that. Anyone else who hasn't yet spoken who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Heath Ritchie, one Woodbury Hill. I was curious, it sounded like this $215,000 is going to be added to some other funds. If you could tell me the current balance of that account that's available, like how much have we built up to? And then also, is there any other, is there any land that we have purchased using this mechanism? When was the last time that happened?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. And did it go to town meeting? Thank you.
Darren Klein through the moderator. The previous comment prior to this, gentlemen, is absolutely correct. Anything purchased with conservation, with monies that have been designated by the CPC to be used for conservation purposes, that, any land purchased would have to be used only for purposes consistent with the Conservation Act. It would have to be, that land could only be used for conservation purposes.
Mr. Moderator, the balance as of August twenty-first in the Conservation Trust Fund was $544,000, $544,636.82 as of August twenty-first. Five four four six three six point eight two.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. Any further discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Tobin.
I would like a clarification from the Council, our Council, on this one. May any of this money from the ConCon be transferred into one of our numerous trusts? That way, it'll circumvent a town vote. We do not want that. We are starting to develop Affordable Housing Trust and other trusts from semi-public private sources, and I'm just wondering about this whole movement towards trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. I'm going to take a wild guess that the answer to that is no, but I will get that answer for you. Anyone else looking to address this matter who hasn't yet spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Laura Evans, seventy-seven High Street. And I am a volunteer on the Conservation Commission. And one reason to support the Conservation Commission having the budget is that word is water. It's absolutely essential that we, as a town, protect our wetlands and preserve the water that we all drink and use. And in order to do that, we need to purchase and own the land around our wellheads. And to reiterate the point, the Conservation Commission cannot buy the land. We would propose to the select board, and they would go to town meeting, follow the proper protocol, but it's really essential that we protect the water supply. We drink our surface water and our well water, and we need to protect that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Any further discussion? Anyone who hasn't yet spoken? And the answer to Mr. Tobin's question is no. Mr. Johnson?
Was there someone that just?
Oh, I didn't, if someone else had their hand up, I missed it, sorry. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
David Kaplan, fourteen Drummond Road. Clarification, please. If the money cannot be spent without coming to town meeting, how does doing this speed anything up?
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll get to that. Mr. Johnson? All set. Anyone else? Ms. George?
I just wanted to remind people that the town puts into this Conservation Trust Fund about $450 a year. So for that to stack up for a lot of money is going to be a lot of years. That's why CPC, the regs were written by the state that only two groups can have a trust fund that builds money up. One is the Conservation Commission with their trust fund that can put money aside from CPC into that, so it's available when it's needed. It doesn't have to raise the money when a piece of, when a parcel comes up. And the same thing as Selectman Lilia mentioned, when we become, when we put money into a municipal trust. That money is banked in there, so it's put in there for when it's going to be needed. But to get it out, that will all have to come to town meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. All right, I sense you're ready to vote? No, we're not ready to vote. Yes, sir.
Peter Weber, eighty-three High Street. Just could I ask for a quick clarification of Town Council's response to Steve Roulette's question about the use of the land that might be purchased with conservation funds? He asked if it could be used for recreation, and you said it could only be used for conservation. We recreate on conservation lands in this town that have been bought with conservation funds. Hiking trails, biking trails, and all kinds of recreation, so could you clarify that point?
Again, it's defined by the Conservation Act, but the most simple definition would be free for passive recreation, not active recreation. It's the simplest way for me to explain it. The definition of the Conservation Act is a little bit more explicit.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I sense you're ready to vote. I sense you're ready to vote. You've heard the motion. Appropriating and transferring $215,000 is set forth in, on page seventy-three of the town meeting voters' booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Fifth Motion located on page seventy-three. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $175,000 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation, Community Undesignated Account, as a grant to Harbor Light Community Partners, a nonprofit corporation duly organized under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to be expended under the oversight of the Board of Selectmen, working with the Community Preservation Committee, for the creation, construction, and establishment of affordable community housing at five Granite Street, Rockport. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this motion.
Moved and seconded, Ms. George.
This project is sponsored by the town and local nonprofit Harbor Light Community Partners. This project is coming to us for additional cost increases due to supply chain and other factors. Also, the increasing cost of fencing, landscaping, and site lighting, premium for dark sky, no spill to adjacent properties. This is on the grounds of the old Silver Brothers Forest, and it will add an additional twenty-three units of subsidized housing for the town. It includes seventeen studio units for age sixty-two plus and two townhouse buildings in back for families, two two-bedroom units, and one building with four three-bedroom units. This facility will also serve as the hub for services and have space for overnight staff as necessary or needed. And this is the third Harbor Light property in Rockport that includes Rockport High School Apartments and Pigeon Cove ledges. The planned ribbon cutting is scheduled for September fourteenth, this Thursday, and this project will increase our number of affordable housing units from one thirty-five to one fifty-eight, a seventeen percent increase, getting us up to four point six percent. And this falls under affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite Street. Affordable housing is certainly a good cause and something the town badly needs. Just how affordable is it? I heard that the units for the single people were $1,800 a month. I couldn't afford that. Many people couldn't. But there is a need for it, and it is a good cause. And sadly, we were all asleep at the switch when the Board of Appeals did their hearing on the comprehensive permit. And there we end up with the buildings and an enormous parking lot, a sea of asphalt between the buildings and the street. And then the pathetic landscaping. There are four birch trees out front, one of them already showing signs of decline, if not dying. And the birch trees, even if they were healthy, would never be proper shade trees, which might be a blessing for a huge parking lot, but not what is needed. What's needed is a solid barrier of evergreens, not the dinky arborvitae's that are planted around the edges, but the western variety that grow six feet wide and thirty feet or forty feet tall, so that we don't have to look at the hideous parking lot. And incidentally, the Board of Appeals, when they listed all of the things that they were forgiving them, meeting the requirements in the zoning, neglected to mention that they were allowing the parking lot... to mention that they were allowing the parking lot between the buildings and the street, which is not allowed in the zoning. There it is, and it's not going to go away. What can be done now to tame what's there? And if anyone's here from Harbor Light, they might care to speak up and offer to go back to the Board of Appeals for an alteration of the comprehensive permit to give us a proper barrier between the parking lot and the street. Incidentally, the plans for the landscaping, which were approved by the Board of Appeals, are not the plans that are on file in the Building Inspector's Office, which were done by a different outfit, not the one that's cited in the Board of Appeals' approval. So I'd like to know if they're going to give us a proper barrier of trees against the street, in which case I might vote for it. And you may think my concerns are right on the mark or simply off the wall, but it is a fact that they're going to open and have their ceremony on Thursday, and we're going to get the housing. We've given them half a million dollars in two installments so far. We're going to get the housing whether or not we give them another cent. So I want to know if we're going to get the evergreens, you know, that we ought to have as a barrier. I hope that we'll get an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Further discussion? Yes. Selectwoman Wilkinson.
Good evening. Sarah Wilkinson for the Board of Selectmen. I would respectfully disagree with Toby. I would say that instead of being asleep at the wheel while the Board of Appeals was having hearings, lots of us were actually fully in support of the Harbor Light project. We, I have toured it. I know the rest, most of the rest of the board has toured it. We've been invited to a ribbon cutting this coming Thursday. These are 23 units, six of them family units. They had over 500 applications for these housing units. We can all sit here and say, we need housing, we need housing. Harbor Light has been an amazing, amazing partner for this town, and they are bringing housing that's very nice, very adequate. It would be nice if the units were bigger. Of course it would. It would be nice if my house were bigger. But I'm grateful for them for being an excellent partner. I'm hoping that the family units bring more kids to the school system, that when we toured it, we were like, how amazing if this adds a bus stop. But it's adding housing, which is what we need. And I think we should all be supportive of that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Yes, sir.
William Workman, 85 Main Street. Like Selectwoman Wilkinson, I'm also very grateful that Harbor Light is here. It's high time. However, I don't believe it's gonna bring kids into the school. We've got 17 units that are something like 400 square feet. Those are not gonna be big family units. The bigger point, though, is that building here is expensive. This project, I think, ran north of $10 million. It's something like 1,000 square feet or dollars per square foot of living space. If you factor in public or common space, it's still something like $650 per square foot. So if we want more housing in Rockport, especially affordable housing, it's gotta come in on budget. If I'm $175,000 short on my project, I just don't do something. I wouldn't go to the town for it. So I feel like we've already made a big contribution. The trees and so on were already in the plan. They should stick to the plan. So I do not support additional money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Vella, 17 King Street. I'm the chairperson of the Rockport Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. This is the best deal on the North Shore. It costs Harbor Light around $13 million, and we won't even pay close to $1 million to get those 20-some units and get our SHI up to 4.6% and avoid, continue to avoid, having a hostile developer in here. That's what we're at risk of, a hostile developer. They are a friendly developer.
Thank you, Ms. Vella. Selectwoman Donnelly.
Just a couple of clarifications. The small units, Mr. Workman, are for seniors. There are six family units. Two of them are beautiful two-bedroom units. Four of them are beautiful three-bedroom units. They're definitely going to bring children. People have to have children in order to qualify for those units. In response to Toby's claim that it costs $1,800 per individual, the rent is based on a percentage of income, and I believe the cap is no more than 30% of an individual's income can go toward the rent.
Thank you, Ms. Donnelly. Yes, ma'am.
Beth Sullivan for Summit. I can see the project. Brian, I'm sure we're related somewhere down the line. I can see this project from my home. Toby is correct. There is a great deal of asphalt. That's required less for parking than it is for actually circulation. The way the buildings are sited, in order to get fire trucks, ambulances, delivery trucks, get them in, get them out, that's a lot of asphalt. But the landscaping does not appear as it was presented some five or six years ago. And it's pretty paltry. So nobody answered Toby's question about, is this money going to get us additional landscaping to really soften what was presented and make it look like it was presented when we approved it, gosh, five or six years ago?
And thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And to be clear, Ms. George is ready to address these matters. I'm intentionally holding back until we've had discussion, and we've got a series of points that the sponsor of the motion can address. And I believe we have someone here from Harbor Lights who might be able to address this as well. With my discretion, I don't believe that they're voters, but I can allow that. Before we get there, any further discussion from the floor? Am I missing anybody? Yes, sir.
David Kaplan, 14 Drummond Road. Clarification. If the town votes no on this, what exactly happens or what doesn't happen that would otherwise happen?
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan. I will get the answer for you when we return to the sponsor, Ms. George. Any further discussion before I ask a member of Harbor Lights to address the meeting? Yes, sir. Mr. Tobin? Yeah, hold on. I can hear you clearly, but other parts can't. Just restate your, there's a mic right behind you, Mr. Tobin. Restate that if you would.
Thank you. Yeah. Bill Tobin, 24 Beach. What is the actual amount of money the town has contributed by us to the project thus far before we vote on the $175,000 more money? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. I'm gonna turn to Harbor Lights in a moment. Any further discussion from the floor, and then we're gonna go to Ms. George. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jenny Amory from 8 Andrews Hollow. I just really wanna support this motion because Harbor Light is a well-respected community development corporation in the state. And they also, and I wanna also commend the neighbors who live near the affordable housing, who I know Harbor Lights told me was, this is one of the most, best communities they've worked with in terms of a partnership around developing this affordable housing. So, and as the Chair of the Housing Trust Fund said, this is a very modest amount for the town to contribute in relation to the total project cost. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion before I turn to Harbor Lights, and then Ms. George? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Paige Eaton, 6R High Street Court. Just to address a question, I think what happens if we don't vote for this is some other town doesn't get affordable housing, or at least doesn't get some money because Harbor Light Homes has to use that money that we can provide for them for this building. And they won't be building something else somewhere else. I personally vote for this every time because it's important, both for our seniors and to get families in. And I donate to Harbor Light Homes separately for my own budget.
Thank you, Ms. Eaton. Anyone else on the floor? I'm gonna use my discretion and ask Harbor Lights to address the meeting on the project, and then we're gonna turn to Ms. George and her committee to speak to the points that have been raised. You feel welcome to come down to the front if you wanna be able to communicate a little more effectively.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristin Carlson. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development at Harbor Light Homes. Our Executive Director, Andrew DeFranza, is here too. Just to address a couple of points. So the landscaping is per the plan. The budget for the landscaping was $235,000. Very robust. The trees, part of the reason we don't have dense trees at the front is because of sightlines and safety, turning in and out of the property at the access on Granite Street. Also, all of the landscaping isn't completely in. The landscapers are still finishing that up, so that is maybe contributing. So not quite done yet. The amount of money, if Rockport, if the town meeting approves this CPC award, will be $841,000 approximately, which is 7% of the total development cost. The total development cost is $12.5 million. That equals about $36,000 per unit that the town has contributed, which I think is a great deal for each unit of affordable housing. This housing will be affordable to families and seniors in the very long term, and it will be a continual asset to the town. It also leverages millions of dollars of private investment, of tax credit investment, of state money. The state came back in. We've all been dealing over the past years with escalations, both in construction costs and in interest rates, in labor shortages, and in supply chain problems that create these budget gaps unlike anything, you know, certainly I've seen before. So we've got state, we've got regional money, we've got Harbor Light contributing money. So it takes everyone kind of putting in to bridge those budget gaps that we wish weren't there, but that's the cost of things.
Could you perhaps address what happens with a no vote?
With a no vote? Well, we've got people moving in. We're not gonna tell them they can't move in. They will continue to move in. But it is, it's, with a no vote, we will be back next year to the CPC. Because this, without this funding, we have a big hole in our budget, which is something that we, as a relatively small nonprofit, have to bridge. So that's what would happen with a no vote.
Thank you so much. Ms. George.
I don't think I have anything further to add. I mean, Harbor Lights has been a great partner for us, and it looks like a great development, and I can't wait to see it open and have families in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Any further discussion? I sent you ready to vote. The motion is appropriating and transferring $175,000 from the Community Preservation, Community Undesignated Account as set forth in the fifth motion under Article E, contained in pages 73 and 74 of the Voters Booklet. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, sixth motion located on page 74. CPC Chair Ruth George moves that $57,200 be appropriated and transferred from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account and be expended under the direction of the School Committee, working with the Community Preservation Committee for the replacement of the preschool playground at Rockport Elementary School at Jordan's Lane, Rockport for the restoration, rehabilitation, and/or preservation thereof for recreational purposes. Board of Selectmen and Community Preservation Committee support this article.
Moved and seconded. Ms. George.
Thank you. This application is sponsored by the Rockport Schools. The applicant is looking to replace the preschool playground that is also open year-round to all of the community off-school hours. This was put in, and I think, 2006, on the backside of the elementary school by the preschool, and is in need of full replacement and upgrades. They are going to relocate this playground, to put it next to the big Amelia Grace playground for better access for parental watching of children in different age groups. This will be fenced in for safety, and this falls under recreation. It's very much needed. As you can see now, they have moved it. It's over next to the tennis courts, and it is very small and in need of a complete redo. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. George. Discussion? Any discussion? My keen sense tells me you're ready to vote. The motion is to appropriate and transfer $57,200 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Account as set forth on page 74 of the Voters Booklet. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. George.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Point of order. A mic for Mr. Michaels. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the old number. We voted a new number because they determined after some work on the project that they needed additional funds. So the actual number is $68,595.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Let me see if we can get that clarified.
Yeah, so that's $11,000 more.
All right. Let me try to get that clarified.
Thank you.
Mel, come on up. Sorry. Mr. Michaels, come on up. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. It's been determined that the amount was correct as passed by town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Thank you, Ms. George. And we now move on to...
Mr. Moderator, Article F motion is located on page 84. Government and Bylaw Committee Member Charlie Seavy moves that the town approve Article F as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this motion, and Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded. And, Mr. Seavy, before we get to you, just for the, for the meeting, there are a series of warrant articles and motions being made under those warrant articles, which you will note in the warrant indicate that the scope of those particular changes, most of them are rather lengthy, convoluted bylaw changes. The scope of the article is limited to the struck-through and bold language which is replacing or adding to the bylaw, rather than an open form on the entire scope of the bylaw. I hope that makes sense to you and is logical. But just as a preface, as we get into it, there are a series of these types of amendments, again, which is one reason they are, in my judgment, related. So for your consideration as we begin to hear the motions and discussion. Thank you so much, Mr. Seavy.
Charlie Seavy, 18 Frank Street. This is, I have Article F starting on page four in the booklet. I gotta admit that something's 151 pages long, sort of stretches the definition of booklet, but...
And just to clarify that, Mr. Seavy, thank you. It is on page four of the warrant, which is at the beginning of the booklet. And then, as you go through the booklet on pages 83 and 84, there's a more fulsome explanation with a summary of the motion and the recommendations from the Cognizant Committee. there's a more fulsome explanation with a summary of the motion and the recommendations from the Cognizant Committees. So it's on Pages 83 and 84 with a little more information of the Voters' Booklet, but thank you.
Okay, everybody got a handle on where the blasted thing is. This one is really straightforward. It's Section 10 of Article 3. The membership of the Housing Authority is dictated by state law, and that's all this article does, is get the art, the art bylaw in conformity to state law. We simply, we can't argue with the state. It's kind of like trying to argue with the ocean.
Thank you, Mr. Seavy. Would anyone like to argue with the ocean?
Don't even think it.
Discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you are ready to vote. The motion is to approve Article F as printed in the Town Meeting Warrant, and specifically as set forth on Pages 83 and 84 of the Town Meeting Voters' Booklet. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article G, the motion is on Page 89. Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves that the town approve Article G as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded, and I believe it is in the Town Meeting Booklet. Article G is set forth on Pages 84 through 89. Moved and seconded. Ms. Kaiser?
Good evening. Lori Kaiser, Chair of the Government and Bylaw Committee. Tonight, we are going to consider changes to the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust Fund bylaw to make it easier to operate. The suggested changes were developed with input from the general public, members of the Select Board, the Town Administrator, the current trustees of the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust, and the Government and Bylaw Committee. The article was reviewed by Town Council. For those of you who are unfamiliar with this bylaw, in 2017, Town Meeting adopted the Mass State Statute, which allowed Rockport to create a municipal entity for the purpose of developing affordable housing in Rockport. But unfortunately, the bylaw as adopted required the appointment of a nine-member Board of Trustees, which turned out to be unworkable. That was because four of the trustees were required to serve on multiple town boards in order to qualify for membership in the trust, and one of those boards did not even exist. So initially, people required to serve were either unwilling or unable to serve. In January of this year, Government and Bylaw reported to the Select Board that, except for the membership section, the bylaw was fundamentally sound in that the Select Board might want to appoint at least five members to it. This would constitute a quorum and would allow the trust to begin operating while we all worked on rewriting the bylaw for this town meeting. In April of this year, the Select Board did just that, and the trust has begun to operate. So now, if you will turn to Page 85 of the Voters' Booklet, you can follow along on the text as I take you through six of the changes being proposed before you vote on the motion. Section 2 adds an official acronym, which is spelled R-A-F-H-T, and pronounced Raft, to avoid the default acronym, which would have been R-A-H-T, which would have been pronounced Rat. Section 3 deals with the membership of the board, and it has been rewritten to reduce the number of trustees from the current nine to a minimum of five or a maximum of seven, and the number to be set by the Select Board, and to provide for staggered terms. Also, to delete the need for any member except the Select Board member to be on other boards. The Select Board must be, the Select Board member must be maintained, because this is required by state law, and the words "or designate", which immediately followed the mention of the Select Board member, has been deleted as contrary to state law. These changes will allow the Select Board to adjust the number of trustees upward or downward based on the circumstances over time. If it is difficult to find members, like it has been in the past, then the number can be reduced to five, and the trust can still operate with a quorum of three. If there is more interest, the membership can be enlarged to seven. Government and bylaw does not recommend keeping the membership at nine, because anything more than seven would require a quorum of five, and in general, it is difficult to schedule meetings with such a large board. In Section 7, on Page 87, a reference to the State Records Law has been added to make the list of state laws more complete. In Section 10, on Page 88, a clarifying sentence has been added to suggest, at the suggestion of the Town Administrator, to make sure that the town's standard of financial practice for approving expenditures was followed. And then in Section 11, also on Page 88, the FinCom, as well as the Select Board, will now receive a copy of the trust's annual report, as the work of the trust would likely involve important financial matters for the town going forward. And finally, a new Section 12, also on Page 88, was added outlining the powers of the committee to make policies, rules, and regulations. This simply states the inherent powers of any town committee, but Government and bylaw thought it would be a good idea to spell it out. So thank you for listening and considering our changes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Mr. Arsenian?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Thank you to Lori Kaiser for the explanation. I think the account of how the trust failed to be appointed is not quite accurate, but that's not worth disputing about. It is thanks to Lori Kaiser and Herman Lilia that we now have the Rockport Affordable Housing Trust. I move to amend the main motion to approve Article G as follows. Under Section 3, first, after the words, "There shall be a Board of Trustees," the board, consisting of, delete the words "five," "two." Second, delete the words "four," parentheses, "four," "two," immediately before the words "six," parentheses, "six," "members at large." Third, delete the entire sentence starting with, "The trustees shall provide," shall serve for a term, and ending with, "to provide staggered terms," and replace it with, "The trustees shall serve for a term of two," parentheses, "two," "years in staggered terms as determined by the Select Board." That's long and complicated, but it boils down to something quite simple. It requires seven members...
Mr. Arsenian, just hold on for one moment. Mr. Arsenian's amendment is up on this screen, and apologies to the, my right side of the room, but it is up on the screen if anybody wants to look at it. And before we go further, is there a second? Second, moved and seconded. Mr. Arsenian?
All of that up on the screen, and what I read to you is ungodly complicated, but it's all quite simple. This would require seven trustees, not five to seven. The reason for that is you want more people with different skill sets, different experience, rather than fewer. Also, it requires a larger number for a quorum. With five, three is a quorum, and it would be unfortunate if three people were making the fateful decisions. The Board of Selectmen with five members, when it comes to important decisions, really important ones, or ones that relate to board policies, always wait until all of them are there. So it's better to have more people on board, both for the experience they bring to it, and so that in the event that people do not show for the meetings, that you don't end up in situations where three people are making the decisions. All of that that's written up there flows from those simple facts. Before, what was called for was nine members. Lori Kaiser says it's unwieldy. Perhaps so. Now what's proposed is five to seven. This would require seven. That simple.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson, if you could have a mic?
Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. Again, my issue is not that people aren't trying to serve the town well, but how we're getting away from the community of residents serving and having opportunity. Can you tell me, Mr. Moderator, I have answered, what authority will this Housing Authority have? Will they be able to purchase properties? Will they be able to enter into contracts with developers? How much is away from the operations of the town meeting?
I will work on that, however, remember, the article... But remember that this motion and article are limited to strikeouts and substitutions. The bylaw is already in existence. Technically, that question is beyond the scope of what we're discussing, but I am gonna try to get an answer for you. So the question, and more specifically, at the moment, the motion on the floor is not the main motion. The motion on the floor is whether to amend the proposed bylaw, or the proposed bylaw changes, which would render the trust having seven members versus five to seven, or, as it now stands, nine. So that's the question on the floor, whether to amend the motion, rendering the proposed changes so that the trust would have seven members, at least six of which would be at large, if I understand it all correctly, which I believe that I do. So that's the question, is whether to amend the motion so that there are seven members, not five to seven. So on that point, any discussion on that point? Ms. Vella?
Hi, Diane Vella, 17 King Street. I'm the chairperson of the Rockport Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. We have five members right now. All five members want to keep this from five to seven members. We are finally moving along. We've had six meetings. This is, we are in the baby steps. We can bring in all kinds of advisors, but not have them as members of the board. So we would like the flexibility. As we get going and get started, we're just beginning. We'd like to keep the bylaw change from five to seven. Would appreciate to not have this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Vella. So you speak against the amendment? Would anyone like to speak to the question on the floor, whether to amend the pending motion so that the bylaw, if then passed, would be seven members, not five to seven? Anybody wish to speak on that issue? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Evans?
Hi, Laura Evans, 77 High Street. Just a quick recap of the timeline. We, as Town Meeting, voted in the Affordable Housing Trust in 2017, and it was not populated by the Selectmen until 2023. So we waited six years. Meantime, we've got a mandate from the state to have 10% of our housing stock affordable, which is what the trust is all about. And it took the Select Board two votes in order to get people on to the trust. And now, as the chairperson just said, they're slowly moving forward, but six meetings. I mean, if we change the mandate to seven members, and it takes a long time, as it has taken a long time to build the trust thus far, they will miss the next round of CPC funding, and us, we as a town, will be way behind the eight ball. We're only at 4.7% of affordable housing with the Harbor Lights development. We're far away from the 10%. So I say keep it at five, five to seven, as the chairperson just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Anyone else wish to speak to the question of amending to require seven versus five to seven? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. James Creamer, 69 South Street. I just want to register opposition to the amendment to make it a requirement that there be seven members of the Affordable Housing Trust, as it's just gonna further delay implementation. Missed opportunities will result. So that's simply what I'm trying to say, is that I think we should keep it flexible at five to seven and go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klein?
Darren Klein, Town Council through the moderator, to answer the gentleman's question. It's a long bylaw, but I can give you, I can give you a pretty short answer to your question, even though it's not up for debate tonight. Under the, it's very similar to sort of the Conservation Commission with the conservation funds. It depends on the purchase, but any type of purchase of land will require at a minimum the Board of Selectmen's approval, and if there needed to be a borrowing of any kind, it would come back to Town Meeting. But under your bylaw, the, they are authorized to purchase land, but it would be conditioned on being approved by the Board of Selectmen. And obviously, any type of purchase that required additional funding or borrowing would have to come before Town Meeting.
Well, just to remind everybody, right now, the question on the floor is whether to amend the motion so that the motion would be seven versus five to seven. That's the question on the floor at the moment. Does anybody wish to speak to five versus seven? And I'll return to you in a moment as the sponsor, Mr. Arsenian, but is there anyone else who wishes to speak to amending so that it's five, seven versus five to seven? That's the question. Mr. Arsenian?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The two people who stated that requiring seven members would delay the operations of the trust are simply mistaken. The trust, as Diane Vella said, is up and running, and will continue so, whether or not the Selectmen took, you know, two weeks, or two months, or two years to appoint additional members. So the trust is a going concern, and it's just whether you want more people with different skill sets and a larger number of people to be a quorum. With five, three can make the loads. With seven, it's four, marginally better.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Anyone else wish, yes, ma'am?
Can everybody hear me? So just as Mr. Arsenian said, Barbara Kaplan for Ocean Avenue, that the Select Board, if they only had three members, would never make an important decision. Well, the same would hold true with the trust. But at least they could meet and continue their research and their business of moving us toward affordable housing. It doesn't mean they're gonna make major decisions with three people. It's the same as the Select Board, Mr. Arsenian. So I don't see that as any issue, and I say, vote no for this amendment, because this body is very interested in moving forward, and they're working very hard on researching all possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan. Anyone else on the motion to amend? I sense you're ready to vote. Let me try to restate the motion. The motion by Mr. Arsenian is to amend the main motion, which would result in the trust having to have seven members versus the current phrasing of the motion, five to seven. So if you vote aye or yes for the motion, the main motion would restrict, if passed, the trust to seven. If you vote no, the main motion as originally drafted would remain having five to seven members of the trust. So, any question, any confusion about the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Arsenian say aye. All those opposed say no. Requires a majority vote, the motion fails. Now we return to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion is outlined by Ms. Kaiser, with the bylaw changes is outlined in Pages 84 to 89 of the Voters' Booklet. Anyone wish to address that? You got it. All right. So, the motion under Article G. So you've heard the motion made under Article G as stated by the Town Administrator, and is contained in Pages 84 through 89 of the Town Meeting Voters' Booklet. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article J. Motion is located on Page 126. Government and Bylaw Committee Member Charlie Seavy moves that the town approve Article J as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen support this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
Mr. Seavey.
Thank you. Is this working? Yeah, okay. I'm not going to argue with the pages. These guys are behind me after all. By way of background on this, X number of years ago, we passed an amendment to Chapter Three that authorized the town clerk to make certain editorial changes to the bylaws, the basis being that presidents and governors are given to rearranging their agencies, renaming things, so that if the president chooses to change the name of an agency, technically, we'd have to go back to town meeting to say, we need to change this. So we attempted to fix it so that if something like that happened, the town clerk could simply change the thing and be done with it, and we wouldn't have to take it all to town meeting. So it passed town meeting at the time. What you may or may not know is that everything that we pass has to then be reviewed by the State Attorney General's Office, again, arguing with the state, et cetera. Well, they took a dim view of this. They thought that the town clerk should not have all that power. They might run amok with it. You can never tell what's going on in Melanie's head. So they kicked it back. So this is our attempt now to get in line with what the State Attorney General's Office suggested. The town clerk still has that power, but they have to work in, they have to touch base with the Government and Bylaws Committee and let us know, and presumably the Board of Selectmen too, what they're doing. It's really just editorial changes, and it will, this one will go through the State Attorney General's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey. Anybody want to discuss the town clerk making substantive alphanumeric changes? Seeing none, I sense you are ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion made under Article J and is contained in page 126 of the Town Meeting Voters Booklet say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Motion located on page 108. Government and Bylaw Committee Member Penny Pilzer moves that the town approve Article H as printed in the September 11, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen support this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Pilzer.
Hello, I'm Penny Pilzer, 71 Eden Road, Government and Bylaws Committee. I'm in charge of Chapter Eight, which is Public Works. We're going to be talking about a number of items, and it will probably be mainly about the stormwater provisions. But before that, I'm going to go through 8A and 8B and the very few changes that we made, going on your, in your booklet, starting on page 90. We made changes pretty much just in A and B to make things a little more clear, such as what should happen when a DPW commissioner is out of, is disabled, changing the names of things, and just taking language that was there, but we didn't think was very clear, and making it say what we thought it should say. And I'm not going to comment at great length about that, because those changes, I think, as you read through your booklet, you will find that there isn't a lot to say. The more important changes are to our stormwater provisions, and particularly 8D, but I'm going to be talking about that during the next motion. This motion includes changes to bylaw 8C. What 8C deals with is illicit connections, and kind of the golden rule here is, don't dump dirty water into our municipal storm drain system. Don't, you will hear references to the MS4 maybe in our discussions. The MS4 is our municipal storm sewer drain system. Don't dump dirty water there. If there's anything other than stormwater in there, it shouldn't be there. And we did make the most, I think, we took out some definitions, you're saying, why did they take out those definitions? Well, they referred to words that were never used. We added a few where we had added some words, but basically, we had, we, let's see, Section Seven, page 103, we took some language that was floating kind of at the top of the exemptions section and put them as an actual exemption for discharge or flow resulting from firefighting activities, except where they are identified as significant contributors of pollutants to service waters or groundwater. We put those down amongst the exemptions. Then, in terms of what is an illicit discharge, we made that, we thought, a little bit more clear. There were kind of some provisions in the definitions and some in the statute. We put it all in the operative clause. So I think it's pretty straightforward, and we did not make very many changes to Section 8A through C. And so I'm just ready for discussion and vote.
Thank you, Ms. Pilzer. Any discussion? If we could have a mic to my right.
Hi, Kelly Hill, 3 Treggodye Bow. I just have one, hi Penny. I have one clarification question. I see that at the very end, you struck out the 30 days sort of grace period to comply. Did you re-put that language somewhere else? I read through this kind of fast, but are you saying that there's not 30-day grace period or that it's indeterminate, or it's on page 108, right before the motion?
On page 108.
Okay, well, hold on. You take that note down. Thank you. That was your question? Thank you.
Oh, it's 30 days from the effective date, and 8...
Hold on. I'm sorry. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion, any other discussion? And we're going to return to the sponsor of the motion in a moment. Any further discussion? Ms. Pilzer.
We struck out the language which refers to property owners having 30 days from the effective date of the legislation, because 8C was enacted, I don't know, 20 years ago or so, and we figure that's probably enough time.
Thank you, Ms. Pilzer. Any further discussion? Again, since you're ready to vote, the motion on Article H has been made by Ms. Pilzer and is contained in pages 89 through 108 of the Town Meeting Voters Booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Wow, I'm on a roll.
Hold on, we've got to get a motion out.
Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Member Penny Pilzer moves that the town approve the motion for Article I, as listed on pages 125 and 126 of the September 11, 2023 Town Meeting Voter Booklet. Board of Selectmen support the motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Just give me one more. Moved and seconded. Ms. Pilzer.
The next, the next section that we're going to talk about is Section 8D, Stormwater. You say, hey, 8C was about stormwater too. Why do we have, why do we need two provisions about stormwater? Well, number one, because stormwater is very important, as I have learned over the past couple of years trying to deal with these two sections. And the other is they do two different things. The first is about illicit connections to our storm drain sewer system. It says, don't send your dirty water into our storm drain system and out into wherever our storm drain system flows to. The second one, 8D, talks about disturbance of land, and what it says is, it says something slightly different. It says, even if your stormwater is extremely clean, please do not send it into your neighbor's basement. That's what it's trying to do. What it says, in fact, is that, what it says, in fact, is that if you disturb land to the extent that you have engaged in a land disturbing activity to the extent of 2,000 square feet, then you're going to need to get a permit. A land disturbing activity is defined as any activity that causes a change in the position or location of soil, sand, rock, gravel, ledge, or similar earth material, including without limitation, earth fill, earth moving, earth removal, clearing, grimming, or grading. Previously, if you may, the threshold was 20,000 square feet. We've taken it down to 2,000 square feet, and this is indeed a big change. Why have we done that? Well, it's, it's, there's, there's, there are a lot of reasons, and I'm looking for them here. It's because enforcement of our previous provisions was not great, and we've had problems as a result. It's because we're sitting on ledge. I don't know how many of you experienced what I experienced when I first moved here, and I took my little flowers and said, hey, how can I plant this? There's only an inch of topsoil. So we've asked the town's experts, Weston and Sampson, and we've talked to the DPW about what we really should be doing to make sure that we don't have stormwater problems in our future, especially people, you know, when there is more and more expansion of houses and blasting of ledge in order to aid construction. So we're saying, no, you're going to have to go get a stormwater permit. And in order to get this permit, you're going to have to have a professional come up with some plans. There's going to have to be a stormwater management plan, an erosion control and sedimentation plan, and an operation and maintenance plan. We've got those in the bylaws because we didn't want to just stick them in regulations. We wanted everybody to know the extent of what we were asking. The required contents of these plans are going to be set forth in the regulations, and it can, there can be some adjusting for circumstances. The planning board will be in charge of the process. One of our, and we've put the planning board front and center here, because in the past, 8D basically read, well, it's, it's the responsibility of the Conservation Committee or the Board of Zoning Appeals or the Planning Board, and then nobody got, got, got to grips with the regulations and what needed to be done. Actually, I think what was trying to be done with that, those provisions, was to have the planning board kind of in charge of it overall, and then the Conservation Commission deals with wetlands issues, and for 40B housing, it is, it is the zoning board of appeals. And in fact, that is the way the state law is written, and I think that's what they were trying to do. Anyway, we are now asking for these plans. Are they going to cost money to get? Yes, they are. It will cost money to do this. Will it, and will it cost the town money? Well, not quite as much, because the provisions we have here is that somebody who's applying to engage in construction, and it's going to disturb 2,000 square feet or more, will have to also pay for an expert to look at the plans for us and to tell us what's going on. We don't think that this is something that you can just have somebody eyeball. That is what we have learned. It's, you need hydraulics experts, you need people who are expert in this particular field, and the town will need expertise, just like the people who are applying.
Thank you, Ms. Pilzer. Before we go on, I'd point out, as I told you at the start, I'm not funny. Bob would have been able to do a lot with the term illicit connections, but I'm not funny, so I'm not going to go there. Any discussion? Mr. Arsenian.
Pages and pages and pages of it, and it's very complicated. And at the Finance Committee meeting, when there were questions about how much it would cost to hire the consultant for the people who were making the applications, the figures battered around were $5,000 to $10,000. Maybe if you've got a large project and you're building a house, that's far for the course, but that's real money. In every case, with this, we're talking about private projects on private property. I'm more concerned about what it's going to cost us, the town of Rockport. Now, the planning board can hire somebody, a professional, to do it at the applicant's expense. It's an elaborate process, and then the planning board has to review it. They're entitled, under the regulations, to charge a fee. Actually, a public hearing should be required to set the fee. That's a minor point missing, but they can charge a fee. The fee would cover their costs. There are references toward the end, numerous references, to an agent, the planning board's agent. There is no such person. The planning board has a part-time secretary and has hoped for years to hire a planner and has been unable or failed to do so. So you might wonder about the enforcement of it. There are other aspects of it as well. Under Chapter 11, Section 3, we're covered. Without all of this elaborate procedure, that's quaintly entitled placing water in streets. Sounds like it was written 100 years ago, but the gist of it is that you're not entitled to channel water, any water, into public streets, and it's the streets that are, in fact, the storm drains. Penny Pilzer has just told you about illicit connections. Those would be pipes that would go into the town's storm drain, and those also are forbidden. So even if this didn't exist in all its elaborate entirety, we are covered. But the town is not covered for the expenses, and as the Government and Bylaw Committee went through it, meeting after meeting, I raised the issue time and again, what it would cost the town of Rockport. No answers are forthcoming. Now, the DPW, and they're the ones who have charge of the storm sewer system, the MS4, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. How's that for government gobbledygook? But they have charge of it, and they too will have to review the permits. You can't charge twice for reviewing the permits. Town Council will please confirm that. So whatever effort the DPW puts into it is not going to be compensated. Also in there is a provision that allows the planning board to set aside all of the elaborate rules, and on their own, with the stormwater booklet, which nobody in this room has probably set eyes on, and I haven't either, they can set aside the rules in favor of stormwater credits, whatever those are. I would assume if you make a mess in one corner of the property and do improvements in another, you might get credits. But I don't think, if you believe in the regulations, you want to set the planning board up to dream up regulations of their own. That's not appropriate. There's one other thing in there that definitely ought to come out, and that is...
Your format, Mr. Arsenian, just...
Yes, the stormwater utility. I move to amend the main motion by deleting from the definitions, the definition entitled "stormwater utility" in its entirety.
Hold on, hold on for a moment. That's a motion to amend by deleting from definitions the definition "stormwater utility" in its entirety. Is that seconded? Moved and seconded?
Thank you. When we first came across this, Penny Pilzer was unaware of what a stormwater utility...
Hold on for one moment, Mr. Arsenian. Hold on for a moment, Mr. Arsenean. And to clarify, Mr. Arsenean, that motion is to delete the definition from the main motion. If your amendment passes, the main motion would essentially leave the prior existing definition in place, just for clarity for the meeting.
Yes, this is true. Unfortunately, because of the way this is set up, only the bolds and the strikeouts can be touched. If we adopt this motion, we fall back on the existing definition, which is there. We can't get rid of that at the moment. Both are objectionable. There is no stormwater utility. It does not exist. It could not be created in the context of this article. It would require a separate article to go before the town meeting and the consent of the Department of Revenue. A stormwater utility, in plain English, is an enterprise fund.
So, Mr. Arsenean, you're at five minutes. Just give me one second. Is there any objection to extending Mr. Arsenean's time by two minutes? Is there an objection? Mr. Arsenean, you're at five minutes. So conclude your remarks very briefly, and then we're going to yield the floor.
It doesn't exist, in fact. It doesn't legally exist. We want to wipe out the definition of it, and then I would offer a resolution that would require the Government and Bylaw Committee to give you a chance to wipe out all references to the stormwater utility in the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Discussion on the motion to amend, which has been made and seconded, to delete from the main motion the definition of stormwater utility, which would have the effect of leaving the prior existing definition in place. Anyone wish to address that question? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote on the motion to amend. A yes or a no vote would support the amendment and delete that definition from the main motion. A no vote would leave it in place as is. You've heard the motion. But, Mr. Arsenean, and on the screen to my right, all those in favor of Mr. Arsenean's motion to amend say aye. All those opposed say no. Yeah. Yeah. We'll go to the clickers. All right, we're going to go to the clickers. That's a little too close. I'm not going to make that call. And if we have them in place, do we have them in place? All right. Not to belabor to waste too much time, but since we haven't used them yet, just for the heck of it, let's all make sure that we are comfortable with it. So if they're all working, I'm going to do a mock motion. So this is a drill, this is a drill. Not real, not to be taken seriously. Nobody can sue the town over this later. Ed Sheeran has volunteered to hold a charity concert to benefit the Rockport School Department. It's before town meeting. Whether to accept that or reject it? All those in favor of accepting Ed Sheeran's donation will press 1 or A for yes. All those opposed will press 2 or B for no when I use the words "vote now." You've heard the motion. All those in favor press 1 or A for yes. All those against press 2 or B for no. Voting now. This is a test, this is a test. It's not real, not real. And that motion carries by 78% to 24%. Seven, oh, okay. Bad eyes. That motion carries with a vote of 108 to 34. Oh, they did? Okay. All right. So I will restate the motion, which requires a majority vote. We'll vote by electronic means. Again, you'll have 12 seconds. From when I say the words "vote now," you will press 1 or A for aye if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for no if you oppose the motion. The pending motion on the floor is whether to amend the main motion, deleting the definition of stormwater utility. All those in favor of the motion press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed press 2 or B for no. That motion fails. The yes vote is 41%, the no vote is 59%, in the numerical value. That motion fails by a vote of, oh, 60 to 86. Thank you, Mr. Klein. All right, we now return to the main motion. In the main motion, as stated by Ms. Pilsner and as contained in the town meeting voters booklet, starting on page 108, to amend the bylaws, Chapter 8, Section D, Stormwater Management. And we'll vote by electronic means. All those in favor of the motion press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed press 2 or B for no. That motion passes by a vote of 76% to 24%. The numerical value is 106 to 34.
Mr. Moderator, Article K. Government and Bylaw Committee Vice Chair Greg Kivistad moves that the town approve Article K as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably. Sorry, motion is on page 130. Motion on 130.
Greg Kivistad, 18 Jewett Street, on behalf of the Government and Bylaw Committee. This concerns public peace and order, prohibited conduct. We have changes that are being suggested. First, there's just a general updating language usage, adding references to Massachusetts general laws throughout, generally, in the bylaw. And then there are three specific changes that I'd like to discuss with you briefly.
And sorry to interrupt, but if you're looking at your voters booklet, you probably figured it out. It starts at pages 127 through 130. The actual brief motion is on page 130, but the changes being discussed start at page 127.
The first specific change is on page 127, and it refers to the, at the behest of the Town Council, to add the Select Board's power to issue a one-day alcohol license for a particular event on town property. That has happened before, by exception, as I understand it. Something like a nonprofit fundraiser event at Millbrook Meadow would be an example. That's the first substantive change that is being suggested. If you turn to page 128, you will see the second substantive change. There is a recommendation to strike this entire section, which is one sentence. No person shall dress or undress in a motor vehicle or trailer on any street in the town. At the behest of the police chief, we recommend deleting the entire section. There are a number of issues with this. Dressing or undressing, what does that mean? If I take off a sport coat, is that undressing? There have been a number of calls made to the police concerning this from particular places in town, and they see this as a waste of resources. The police chief does reassure us that they have ample powers to enforce Commonwealth law that broadly prohibits open and gross lewdness and lascivious behavior. So if anything like that happens, we've got state law, and the police are ready to act. That is number two. Number three is on page 129. This concerns two definitions. One, the definition of smoking has now been broadened in what is being suggested to include lighting and ingesting marijuana and nicotine through various devices like vaping pens and the like. That's the definition of smoking, to include that. The second definition refers to school property. And we've been much more explicit about that to make it consistent with school policy. School property consists of any land, public building, trailer, or motor vehicle owned or occupied by the town's school department. If we approve those two definitions, then we can say that the prohibition of smoking on school property is up to date and consistent with school policy. Those are the three substantive changes.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Yes, sir. We have a microphone for Mr. Ring.
Jonathan Ring, 9 Pools Lane. On page 128, section concerns distributing handbills, saying no person shall canvass, solicit, deposit, or distribute any commercial, non-commercial handbill. If I just skip forward a paragraph. No canvassing or soliciting or any other words to similar effect without application form or permit. How does this affect political campaigning? You know, a candidate running for office, going door to door and canvassing.
Hold on for one moment. Just keep in mind, what we're dealing with is not the substance of the bylaw. It's the strikeouts and the addition of language. If you can make an argument that your remarks go to that, we'll hear you. But that's the question before the floor, is whether to accept the changes to the bylaw, not repealing or substantively altering the meaning of the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody wish to address the motion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, I sense you're ready to vote. The motion under Article K has been made as printed on pages 127 through 130 of the voters booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article L. Motion for Article L located on page 136 and as amended on the screen. Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Member Charlie Seavey moves that the town approve Article L as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant, except that under Section 1, obstructing streets and sidewalks, where the article reads "no person with a permit" shall read instead "no person without a permit."
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, Mr. Seavey.
Okay, we got another one of these with and without. On the very next section, 2, no person without a permit, not with. We discovered this about 15 minutes before I walked into the building, so we're going a little slow. Let's see. Basically, other than those two things, Toby has already talked a little bit about placing water in the street, and I'll mention the pertinences, which may give the moderator a chance to make a joke.
I told you I'm not funny. I'm not making any jokes.
Well, you know, somebody throws you a softball, anyway. The only major thing we've done here actually is not in Chapter 11. We've deleted Section 4 of Chapter 14E. So now everything dealing with off-road vehicles is now in Chapter 11. And I have no idea where Chapter 14E may be anywhere in this thing. But there were two separate bits dealing with off-road vehicles. We now consolidated the whole thing into Chapter 11. So those important differences, the with to without a permit, and mainly we've put all the off-road stuff into this chapter.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. You've heard the motion is made by the town... Oh, I'm sorry.
Toby Arsenean, I've just said I will give him trouble, but in fact, I cannot, nor can any of us. With the strikeouts and the bolds, we're limited to the changes. And you are being asked, in effect, to approve everything else that's there. We can't discuss it. You can accept it or leave it go.
Mr. Arsenean, to be clear, everything else that's there already exists in the bylaws. This is, these are just changes. So if you can, if you can put your remarks to the strikeouts and the insertions.
I guess my point is that, you know, we vote on it, and everything that's there before stays there, whether it makes sense or not, including things that we could argue about for hours passionately, like snow and ice in streets. And then the Government and Bylaw Committee...
But we're not going to argue for hours about any of that.
Absolutely not.
The only, hold on. The question before on the floor is whether to accept the changes. The content of the bylaws is open for discussion with your representatives on the bylaw committee over the course of their meetings leading up to this meeting. But right now, we are deciding whether we're accepting the strikeouts and the additions as laid out by Mr. Seavey. If you can address that, if you can address your remarks to that issue, it's in order. Anything else is not in order. So I'll turn it over to you again.
If you reject the proposed changes, which indeed are harmless, it goes back to the Government and Bylaw Committee, and they might possibly consider substantive changes that would make a difference and might make sense of it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I sense you're ready to vote. You've heard the motion is made by the town administrator, and you have the motion as set forth in pages 130 to 136 of the Town Meeting Voters booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no.
Mr. Moderator, Article M. Motion for Article M is on page 139. Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves that the town approve Article M as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded, Ms. Kaiser.
Thank you. Nope, better move down. There we go. This article, which can be found on page 137 of the voters booklet, and it deals with a hodgepodge of issues. Security alarms, swimming pools, street names and numbers. The various sections are enforced by the police, the fire department, and the building inspector, all of whom have revered the bylaw and offered their comments. The public was also given the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes prior to the finalization of the warrant article. There is really only one change of note, and that is regarding Section 2, which, where the swimming pools, section on swimming pools has been deleted at the request of the building inspector because the section has been obsolete since 2015, when the state of Massachusetts adopted the international standard that now governs these issues. And the police and the fire chief and the building inspectors have indicated the bylaw otherwise works just fine as it is, and they did not need additional changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaiser. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sense you're ready to vote. You've heard the motion is made by the town administrator, and you have the motion as set out in pages 136 through 139 of the voters booklet. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no.
Mr. Moderator, Article N. Motion for Article N is on page 140. Government and Bylaw Committee Member Charlie Seavey moves that the town approve Article N as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant. Board of Selectmen support this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded, Mr. Seavey.
Thank you. The, this has to do with what the Government and Bylaw Committee can make recommendations at town meeting. I've been on the committee since 2018, and we've had a lot of sort of internal discussions about where, what the present bylaw requires is we make a recommend or not recommend to town meeting. Town Meeting. And there have been several times where we felt really uncomfortable making a recommendation one way or the other, simply because we as a committee didn't feel we had the expertise to really make a thumbs up or thumbs down. We have on occasion made recommendations on, well, as an example, a couple, three town meetings ago, there were three citizen petitions on putting town limits on the time of, term limits, good days, I can still talk, putting term limits on the Board of Selectmen. And while we had deeply mixed feelings on the whole thing, there was one of them that was actually, would work. And in the end, we recommended that one. Even if you remember what I said at the time in Town Meeting, it was only because it would functionally very good. The others had various problems with it. What we would like to do is put in the new language that says we make no recommendation one way or the other. If either we don't have the expertise within the committee to make a judgment on what it is, or in truth, there have been several times where I've thought, I don't want to make a recommendation because I think Town Meeting really needs to make up the mind. And I think it's really up to us as Town Meeting to make a decision and maybe not the five of us on the committee going one way or the other. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if you guys would pass this on our recommendation power.
Thank you, Mr. Seavey. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sent you ready to vote. You've heard the motion is stated by the town administrator and you have the motion as contained on page 140 of the voters' booklet. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Motion for Article O is on page 146. Mr. Moderator, Government and Bylaw Committee Chair Lori Kaiser moves that the town approve Article O as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this motion. Government and Bylaw Committee reports favorably.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Kaiser.
I'm going to make this very short and sweet. This is the Dark Sky bylaw, which was adopted in 2003, and it was formally amended in 2017. And we're just, we are recommending no substantial changes were actually made to this bylaw. The primary changes were to reorganize sections to make it more coherent. We did correct a little bit of terminology and clarified some meanings to make it easier to be enforced. And otherwise, we deleted some definitions that weren't needed.
Seeing none, I sent you ready to vote. You heard the motion made under Article O and you have it as contained in pages 141 through 146 of the voters' booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries and the clerk has drawn the next articles in order from the lottery system. We will take up R Romeo, followed by W Whiskey, followed by Q Quebec, followed by S Sierra. So the chair will hear a motion under Article Romeo. R, R W Q S. Oh, that's right. Thank you. And I've been reminded that I determined that R and S are related, so we will take up Article R, followed by Article S, then Whiskey and Quebec.
Mr. Moderator, Article R. Motion for Article R is on page 148. DPW Commissioner Chair Bruce Reed moves that the town appropriate $440,000 to pay costs of capital outlay items for the water enterprise, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and DPW Commissioners support this motion.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Reed. I believe we'll hear from Mr. Sepulow. And this requires a two-thirds vote. And I think we have the ambulance crew still on standby in case there's any untoward actions.
So this borrowing request is for work to be handled in the DAF plant, specifically painting the DAF, the DAF tank, which is a metal tank, upgrading the skimmer and mixing system, and handling some emergency lighting needs. It also would entail allowing us to buy money to purchase water meters as needed. Obviously, our water meters throughout the community are aged and we are trying to replace them internally as needed. We probably will be back in the future for a more comprehensive program.
Thank you, Mr. Sepulow. Any discussion? Before I get, hold on, before I get to you, Mr. Arsenian, anyone who hasn't yet spoken, Ms. Michaels, and I will get to you, Mr. Arsenian. Ms. Michaels. And if we can have a microphone, thank you. June, he's got it right there.
Just one question. Is this borrowing and the next one under Article S a replacement for or in addition to the capital budget approved in April?
Thank you, Ms. Michaels, and we'll get to that. Before I get back to Mr. Sepulow, any further discussion? Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I raise the issue every time when we're dealing with the enterprise funds, raised it at the Finance Committee meeting when they presented it to the Finance Committee. We ought to be told every time what percentage increase it is on the rates, the water and sewer rates, not a figure of 16 cents more or something like that. Most people don't have it in their heads, you know, what the bills were or a calculator to make the calculations. That would be helpful and then we would know how much we're in for. Could we have some statement as? I would vote for it in any case. They need the equipment, know what they're doing, but we ought to be told.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Before I go back to the sponsor, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Sufulo.
So to the first question, is there any addition? It's in addition to the borrowing that was at fall town meeting? I mean, spring town meeting, sorry, previous town meeting. And then Dwight's going to answer the second question.
Yeah, just to respond to Mr. Arsenian, the question that he quite rightly has posed about the increase on the water and sewer rates was an inquiry that we made as well. And we are informed by the Finance Director and the Treasurer after her effort to make the appropriate calculations that the increase will be 15 cents for each of the rates. We asked as a follow-up whether or not a percentage could be calculated, and we were advised that that's a difficult thing to do, given the variables involved. So that's the best we could come up with at this point. I personally calculated the increase that might occur at our home, and it looks like it's between 10 and 15 percent. It's the best we could do at this time.
Thank you from the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I sent you ready to vote. We're going to do this by electronic means? Yes, yes.
I misspoke. One to one and a half percent.
That's good to know. Thank you. Any further discussion? Was that a hand? No. Seeing no further discussion, I sent you ready to vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. So we're going to do this by electronic means. You will have, again, 12 seconds from when I say the words "vote now," you will press 1 or A for aye if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for no if you oppose the motion. Depending motion on the floors, the motion made under Article R and is stated in the voters' booklet. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor, press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed, press 2 or B for no. And that motion passes by 95 percent to 5 percent, and the numerical count is 124 to 866.
Mr. Moderator, Article S. Motion for Article S is located on page 148. DPW Commission Chair Bruce Reed moves that the town appropriates $430,000 to pay costs of capital outlay items for the sewer enterprise, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Section 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and DPW Commissioners all support this motion.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Sepulow. I know I'm butchering your name. You can tell me afterwards. Shalufo. Mr. Shalufo. Mr. Shalufo.
Thank you. This borrowing is for specifically the replacement of two generators. One is Back Beach, which we recently lost to a lightning storm. Believe it or not, that was on the list to be replaced anyways, but it kind of beat us to the punch. We really need to get it done at this point because we have a temporary generator in place until such time that we can replace it. And the other generator would be the Pigeon Cove Sewer Station. Both of those generators are from the 1970s. They've met their long, long past, met their useful life. We actually have a hard time getting parts for those generators, so therefore it is a detriment to the sewer system if we lost power. The other thing that we'd be looking to do is pump station alarm upgrades. Our alarms at our sewer stations are of an older style. There's so many more technical improvements that are made. We use landlines, which are problematic for alarm systems. The modification of, or the modernization of these would be to a cellular-based system that would give you, provide more data and more information to be able to respond to these emergencies more appropriately.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sent you ready to vote. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote, so we will be voting by electronic means. The motion is as made by the town administrator under Article S and as contained in page 148 of the voters' booklet. You will press 1 or A for aye if you are in favor of the motion. You will press 2 or B for no if you oppose the motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. And when I say "vote now," that's when voting begins. You'll have 12 seconds. All those in favor, press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed, press 2 or B for no. And that motion carries by a vote of 98 percent to 2 percent, and the numerical breakdown is 130 to 3. 130 to 3. And I believe we now proceed to a motion under Article W to be followed by a motion under Article Q. So Whiskey and then Quebec.
Mr. Moderator, Selectman Denise Donnelly moves that the town approve Article W as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen support this motion. Motion is found on page 150.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Donnelly?
So this motion has, and the town clerk will correct me if I get this wrong, but this motion has to do with consolidating the solicitation of bills that, I think it's for real estate tax? Yeah. That are $100 or less so that they can all be billed at one time rather than going out twice a year. Is that correct? Carrie, okay. Is that right, Carrie?
Hold on, Ms. Carrie. Let's get the mic.
Ms. Lynn?
Carrie Arno, Finance Director, Treasurer, Collector, parking clerk, you name it. The, right now, the way that this, this particular article will allow for us to bill something that's $100 or less in one bill, rather than breaking it up in the expense of printing the bills and mailing the bills and the general handling of the bills. So if you have a bill that's $100 or less, it will be demanded in full on that first half payment. And for us, if you recall, we are semi-annual, so our first half is due in the fall. It's a moving target. We wait for certification of the tax rate from the state, and then the billing process begins. The second half bill, in this case, if you have a bill $100 or less, you would not have a second half payable on May 1st.
Any discussion? I know this is, any discussion? Yes, sir. If we can have a mic down front? Thank you.
Heath Ritchie, 1 Woodbury Hill. It's the second real estate bill is the one that comes after the state certifies the rate. So if we send out the bill in full before the rate gets certified, are we going to have to send out correcting bills for those properties if the rate is changed by the state?
All right. And before we get that, Ms. Arno, is any other discussion? Any other questions, discussion, issues for clarification? No. Thank you, Ms. Arno.
So we're just going to pick it up. So your first half bill goes out after the state certifies the tax rate, which that process cannot even begin until this meeting has concluded. So once this meeting concludes, we are all crazy busy at the office, the FinCom can attest to this, to getting the tax recap processed in the system with the state. Once that tax rate is certified, that gives us the green light to go ahead and bill your first half bill. So to answer your question, you would not get a first half bill before a tax rate is certified. We bill actual amounts. We do not bill estimates.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I know this is the one we all came here to argue about tonight. This requires a majority vote. You've heard the motion and you have the motion as set out in pages 149 and 150 of the voters' booklet. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Motion carries. We will now proceed to Q for Quebec, which I am informed will be followed by Alpha and then by Bravo.
Article Q, motion is on page 147. Mr. Moderator, Selectman Paul Murphy moves that the town approve Article Q as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen, support this motion.
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded, Mr. Murphy? All set? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Wilkinson, are you addressing this for the board?
Sorry. Well, I have a mint in my mouth. Sarah Wilkinson for the Board of Selectmen. I will defer to, I believe Deborah Ellison is here, who's the Amero's attorney, who can probably explain it more eloquently than I can. The Board of Selectmen fully supports this. This is basically an easement. This is basically an easement. I'll leave the details to you if you'd like, but we support this. It's basically cleaning up, there's an easement issue for utilities. The road and their driveway and property were basically improperly marked on the deed. And I'll let, I'll let her explain, I think that makes more sense.
And hold on, Ms. Ellison, with my discretion, I am going to get to you. Is there any discussion, any discussion? And before I, I will get to you, but is there anybody who hasn't yet spoken during the meeting who wishes to be heard? Yes, sir.
Just a quick, Rick Caston, 31 High Street. Just a quick question. Is there a map or diagram that actually shows what we're talking about?
Thank you, Mr. Caston.
Darren Klein through the Moderator. Just to be clear, because the language is confusing, this article is actually not granting an easement, it's giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to grant easements.
All right, thank you, Mr. Klein. Before we get to Ms. Ellison, the attorney, any further questions, anybody wish to speak from the floor? Mr. Arsenean.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. The article asks the Town Meeting to give permission to the Board of Selectmen to grant the easements. First, before that can be done, charge of the property, which now lies with the DPW Commissioners, I believe, has to go to the Selectmen. That's the way it was worded, although it didn't say DPW Commissioners. The parcel over which the easements would be granted is the Water Tower Parcel at the top of Pigeon Hill. And with all of this expensive technology, it is fantastic that we can't and don't have a map of the parcel in question so that you would know what we were talking about. And that's a grievous failing. But anyway, we're talking about the Water Tower Parcel, and the Ameros who have the last house on the left, if you're driving up Landmark Lane, have a house, it was Susan Hershey's before, with the driveway that goes on to, I believe, Landmark Lane. But further, their lot, nine tenths of the frontage of it, is on the Water Tower Parcel, which belongs to the town. I've been told by one of the neighbors that it was deeded to the town as parkland. I've since been told that's not true. I don't know. The Selectmen ought to know. But there are two parcels in question, both belonging to the Ameros. The first with the house on it, and the second parcel, which they created by going to the Planning Board within the past year and a half for what is called an ANR, Approval Not Required. A bizarre bureaucratic term because approval is required, and the Planning Board granted approval. The Planning Board did that at a Zoom meeting, or I would have known what they were up to and objected. Anyway, they did not project the maps on the screen so that nobody was aware of what was going on. And they granted the Ameros a second lot with frontage on the Water Tower Parcel. In order to grant an ANR, you need frontage on a road. So what the Planning Board did was a careless and foolish mistake. And now there are two lots that we're asked to give the Selectmen permission to grant easements to. And all of this is some significance because the Water Tower Parcel has the water tower, and if it is, in fact, the bailiwick of the DPW Commissioners, they, right there, should be up here objecting, not me making a pest of myself and more enemies. They should be objecting because if you can grant access over town-owned parcels for easements, you know, in watershed, it will be done in other places as well. Other people will come forward and ask for the like. And here's the precedent, to give away town property. So think twice before you do it.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Further discussion from the floor before we go to Ms. Ellison? Any further discussion? Ms. Ellison, in the discretion of his chair, I'll have you, give you the opportunity to address the meeting if you'd like. Feel free to come down or if you want a mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. I represent Jackie and Jeff Amero. They've been longtime residents of the town of Rockport, and they purchased the property in question in 2014. It was part of a subdivision from 1947. The lot has always been accessed over Landmark Lane, and its water and sewer has come in over Landmark Lane. And on November 2022, as Mr. Arsenean pointed out, the Planning Board did approve the division of this lot so that there are now two lots there. That process has been followed. The plan has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds, so that is complete. When they inquired of the DPW how they could extend the water and the sewer and other utilities to this second lot, they were told they needed a formal easement. And we did a title search and were unable to locate a formal easement. So utility easement requires the authorization of Town Meeting, and then the Board of Selectmen will be authorized to grant that easement to the Ameros so that they can put utilities to this second lot. That's the reason the article is on the warrant. And if it is approved, there will be a formal easement that will be negotiated with the Board of Selectmen, which will better protect the town and also better protect the Ameros. So they're asking that you support this article tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Wilkinson?
Just to add, we are not giving any town land away. This is an easement. The property is already laid out, the road is already laid out. It's literally a discrepancy that we found from years and years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Any further discussion? All right, I sense you're ready to vote. This requires a two-thirds vote in order to pass. We will vote by electronic means with that in mind. You've heard the motion on, yes, sir. Yes, you're correct. I'm informed that that's an error, and it actually requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Yes, sir.
Ed Hand, 20 Landmark Lane. I think Mr. Arsenean brought up a point that should be addressed, and that is the issue of frontage. Is that circle, the road that goes around the Water Tower, considered Landmark Lane or not?
Thank you, Mr. Hand. Any further discussion, Mr. Reed? Oh. Can, if we can, Bruce, you want us to get a little mic down? Bruce.
Thank you. Bruce Reed, Chairman of the Commissioners, DPW Commissioners. We have not addressed this at all. In fact, we didn't know anything about this until the meeting with the Selectmen when we listened to it. So we, we just don't know all the answers. I'm told that the top is not part of Landmark Lane, the circle around the water tank. So it's truly town property. So it's something that we've got to discuss, and we just haven't done it yet. Haven't had time.
Yep, yes, ma'am.
Monica Loughton, 11th Story Street. This article, I have to say, caught me by surprise. I thought it was a fairly routine matter, but I'm speaking on behalf of the Rights of Way Committee. And I question whether this easement and the additional lot and the frontage would have any impact on any existing trails in the area. And I would like to know if there are existing trails on these parcels that would be impacted by this action.
All right, and I'm going to go back to the board, I am, but let's get everything out first, and then we'll go back to the board. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
David Kaplan, 14 Drummond Road. I'm a little confused. I'd like clarification, please. Are the DPW Commissioners in favor of this, against this, or are they undecided because they just found out about it?
All right, thank you. And I'll go back there as well, but let me see what other issues might need clarification for anybody before we go to the DPW or the board. Any further discussion? And I'll get to you too, anybody who has not yet spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Paige Eaton, 6R High Street Court. That's right, 6R. I think you're lucky if you don't need an easement in this town, the way everything was laid out, 6R. My utilities come through the town one way. When we hooked up the sewer 30 years ago, we had to get an easement from a friendly neighbor. I think the town of Rockport here can be a friendly neighbor. From what the attorney said, this is the easement they've been using to access their property anyway, and the utilities already exist. Not sure why we would block that, not sure why it would disrupt any existing trails. Seems pretty cutting, right?
Thank you, Miss Eaton. Mr. Arsenean.
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. Deborah Ellison, who incidentally used to be Town Counsel, spoke of access to the lots, but one of the lots has access and has, you know, forever on to Landmark Lane. If we had the map, you could all see. We do not have the map. The other lot, which was created in error by the Planning Board, has no access to Landmark Lane. It abuts the parcel, the town-owned parcel with the Water Tower. And the parcel that was created by the improper ANR directly abuts the town parcel on the south side of the Water Tower Parcel, the field that the town bought. Because it had no access, the town was able to buy it for a sum that we otherwise could not afford. And if a house is built on the second parcel of the two we're referring to, that will entirely obstruct the view from the town parcel down towards the town. Now that you don't own views, the town doesn't, you don't, I don't, but they do exist and are a consideration. And the view is already obstructed, you know, by the trees that have grown up on the Amero's property and what was then Ames's property. I believe that's 16 Drummond, but just above the Kaplans. So that's a consideration, maybe a selfish one. There aren't any trails from the parcel that has the Water Tower because the people who bought the property and back succeeded in cutting them off. They had registered land, and although the Board of Appeals asked them if they would make some concessions, they didn't rise to the bait, and they were given permission. So it's one misfortune after another at the public expense.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenean. Before we go to the board and the DPW, any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. If you could, thank you.
Elizabeth Moulton, 12 Wilcove Road. I just want to clarify, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're looking to vote on giving the Select Board the ability to grant an easement to a parcel of land that is now a buildable lot that doesn't actually exist on any town road. Is that correct?
And we will try to get that answer for you when we go back to the DPW and the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Ms. Moulton. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Jeff Amero, 29 Landmark Lane. I'm the owner of this property. When we purchased this property, we believed that Landmark Lane was the road that was in front of all of the property. We were surprised to find out that it wasn't. Landmark Lane did not extend, at least on the map, that it was not a town-owned right-of-way, it was a town-owned road on a town-owned lot. There are no trails that we're taking off. Where the easement would be is, was, what I believe was already there. There's three motors that are on town land that are like flathead motors, so they're from the '40s or '50s. There's all kinds of car parts when I was going through there when we first bought that property. So we went to the Planning Board to see what would happen. They granted the ANR. That process didn't require us notifying anybody else. And then we went to the DPW, and we asked them about utilities, and they told us that we probably need to come to Town Meeting. So we did go to Public Works, we did not go to the DPW Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amero. Anything further before we go to the board of the DPW? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I just think it's important to understand that easements are routinely granted by towns, and as one of the other speakers mentioned, that there are many situations where an easement for utilities is necessary. And towns very often grant those over their property. And it would be certainly a vetting discussion before the Board of Selectmen, before that happened and the terms of that easement. It does need Town Meeting approval to give that authority, but it's not an unusual situation.
Thank you. Anything further before we go back to the DPW and the Board of Selectmen? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Evans.
Laura Evans, 77 High Street. Is it possible for you guys to show us on a map what we're voting on?
Thank you. Got the point. We're going to go back to the DPW and the Board of Selectmen in a moment. Anything further? Yes, ma'am.
Laurie McKenna, 31 High Street. So from this discussion, it seems like this second lot that was created or separated doesn't have any frontage on a road, so they need the easement for the utilities. Well, how are they going to drive a car onto that lot for the second home that presumably will be built if they don't have any frontage? Won't they need an easement for that as well? And a second question. So couldn't the Ameros bring in the utilities from the existing lot where they do have an easement into the second lot that was created? Is that an option for them?
Okay, thank you, Ms. McKenna. We'll see if we can get to that. Anything further before we return to the DPW and the Board of Selectmen? Anything further? Seeing none, I will turn to the DPW to address the question about whether or not the DPW endorses, approves, opposes the motion under the article. And if you can grab that mic.
So I guess the answer, again, Bruce Reed.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bruce Reed for the DPW, 32 Pigeon Hill Street. I guess we have no opinion. The, our staff has dealt with it. It's never been given to the Commissioners to discuss, so we have not talked about it. So we just have very little knowledge of it. I wish I could give you a better answer, but that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So we've, I will now turn back to the Board of Selectmen, keeping in mind some of the points that have been raised. Whoever's going to speak. Selectman Lilian. Selectman Lilia.
All right, this is an very unusual situation, as you can tell, but not unlike a situation that exists on the road to the water tank in South End, where property was split, frontage was not available in that situation because it was also a town road to the water tank. So there is an example, an existing example of this kind of a situation. Unfortunately, the situation at the top of Pigeon Hill probably would not have come in to your consideration the way it is if other considerations had been dealt with. But there's already an existing situation just like this that the board of selectmen have dealt with in the past and would deal with similarly now. Thank you.
Are we splitting our remarks from the board of selectmen, Sarah? Ms. Wilkinson, if you'd like to.
We are. We're sharing. We're sharing tonight. So just to add on to what Ms. Ellison said, and she can expand further, but this article is just to give the board of selectmen the authority to grant the easement. Moving forward, if we are granted this authority, we would work with the DPW commissioners and DPW staff, obviously, to make sure that the easement, that it's proper for the utilities to grant the easement. So this is just granting the authority to grant the easement.
Any further discussion? You've heard the motion as stated by the town administrator and as contained on page 147 of the voters' booklet. It requires a two-thirds vote to pass. So we're going to be voting by electronic means. You will press 1 or A for "aye" if you support the motion. You will press 2 or B for "no" if you oppose the motion. Again, it requires two-thirds vote. The pending motion under Article Q is made and is stated in the voters' booklet. All those in favor press 1 or A for "aye." All those opposed press 2 or B for "no." Ready, vote now. That motion fails by a vote of 52% to 48%, and the numerical count is 68 to 63. We will now move on to Article A Alpha to be followed by Bravo.
Mr. Moderator, Selectman Chair Sarah Wilkinson moves that the town appropriate and transfer the sums set forth in the September 11, 2023 Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet for Article A on page 67, all for the purpose of paying unpaid bills and adjustments from the previous fiscal year. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, support this motion. Motion is on page 67.
Moved and seconded. Anybody going to speak to that?
Mr. Moderator, these are prior-year bills, services already received, goods already received.
No discussion, any discussion? No one speaking on it? Any discussion? This requires a nine-tenths vote. This requires... Yeah? Yes, this requires a nine-tenths vote. So we're going to do it by electronic means. Again, it's to pay past bills. You can see the amounts contained on page 67 of the voters' booklet. One is $3,900, one is $408.10, $4,770.33, and $2,868. It requires a nine-tenths vote to pass. You've heard the motion under Article A and is contained on page 67 of the Town Meeting Voters Booklet. Because of that nine-tenths, we're going to use electronic means. All those in favor of the motion will press 1 or A for "aye." All those opposed will press 2 or B for "no." Voting now. And that motion carries by 98 to 2%, and the numerical count is 118 to 2. We'll now move on to Article B or Bravo to be followed by X-ray. To be followed by X-ray.
Article B, Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee Chair Dwight Valentine moves that the town amend the votes taken under Articles 5, 5A, 5B, 5C, 6, 6A, and/or 6B of the April 1, 2023 Annual Town Meeting by transferring the sums set forth in the September 11, 2023 Fall Town Meeting Voters Booklet for Article B. Motion on page 68, and in the amounts and for the purposes specified therein. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, support this motion on page 68.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this motion requires a majority vote. You've heard the motion as stated by the town administrator and as stated on page 68 of the Town Meeting Voters Booklet. All those in favor say "aye." All those opposed say "no." The motion carries. We'll now move on to X-ray.
Mr. Moderator, Lead Petitioner Eric Hutchins moves that the town approve Article X as printed in the September 11, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Motion is on page 150.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you. Eric Hutchins, 45 Poole's Lane. A little bit of history to this for those who actually know about the Deep Rock Well. This is a deep rock well in the south woods. You've got to hike about a mile into the woods to even find it. The history of this Deep Rock Well goes back to Frederick H. Tar the Third, who about 20 years ago pursued town boards to look at the feasibility of drilling a well in the south woods to actually provide more drinking water for the town of Rockport. And at that time, I don't even know where he got his research from, but at that time he didn't actually get support. So he went and did a petition article and stood at the dump and stood in front of the post office and got the signatures necessary for a citizen's petition and made his case at town meeting. It passed for $50,000 to fund a feasibility study that went to the DPW, and they hired a contractor. And lo and behold, they did investigatory wells, I think at three locations, and one of them actually ended up being quite successful. And to this day, since it started pumping actively just a couple of years ago, it's probably been as reliable, high-quality, and quantity of water supply that we have in Rockport as a new addition. And in the spirit of a petition article that Ted put that forward, I feel it was appropriate to bring this to town meeting as a citizen's petition to name the wells, even though most of you have probably never seen them before, they're out in the middle of the woods in the name of Ted Tar, who's passed away a number of years ago. That's about as simple as this petition article is, is to name them after him, who really was the mover and shaker that created these. And there's a fair chance, and let me know if I'm speaking out of line, we would have been very close on water supply last year without these deep rock wells. Last year was the real test because during the drought, when everything else went down or the quality went down, the wells kept pumping all summer long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Any discussion? Seeing none, I sense you're ready to vote. This requires a majority vote. It is a non-binding petition. You've heard the motion as made by the administrator and you have it as contained on page 150 of the voters' booklet. All those in favor say "aye." All those opposed say "no." And it passes unanimously, and I so declare it. We now move on to Article U Uniform to be followed by T Tango.
Mr. Moderator, Selectman Herman Lilia moves that the town approve Article U as printed in the September 11, 2023 Town Meeting Warrant with the following change. Map 26 Lot 38 should read Map 36 Lot 38. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, support this motion. It is found on page 149.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Lilia. Oh, and I'll get to you, ma'am.
The lot in question is the Fireman's Trust down in Dock Square, and I realize that many people have worked diligently to make it something other than what it is. However, at the current time, I would make the following statements. If it were rebuilt, the Fireman's Trust would not offer a large venue of significant size. Rockport already has several venues of that size. The new structure would be at risk of damage from sea level rise and/or periodic severe and unexpected storms. It sits in a FEMA velocity zone. Rockport has many other projects other than the Fireman's Trust Building offering greater value to the town that are in current need of renovation: Town Hall, Fire Station, Ambulance Department, Long Beach Sewell. The town does not have the necessary funds to rebuild the Fireman's Trust Building at this time. Additional debt should be reserved for the most important town investments. Retaining the Fireman's Trust as it is requires an insurance policy which annually costs a fix amount. I don't know what it happens to be, but there's a premium. $75,000 is currently held in reserve for unexpected repairs. The current town investment in the structure could be lost as a result of damage from sea level rise and/or periodic and unexpected storms. The revenue from the sale of the property is more important to the town than ownership of an historic but currently useless building. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Lilia. Discussion, further discussion? Yes, ma'am. And there's a... Come on down. Our mic runner was chasing you down the aisle, but that's okay. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Monica Lawton, 11th Story Street. I'm here as the one-time chair of the Building Study Committee, which several years ago looked at all town buildings and recommended strongly that the town maintain, preserve, and restore this building to be a venue downtown owned by the town. The town owns nothing in the downtown except restrooms, and there is no central gathering place for meetings or in connection with our big festivals that we have or used to have in the town. It is a building in an iconic location, really, with views looking directly out to the motif, right in the center of Dock Square. I would like to just let the town know what has gone into looking at this building with the view to reserving it. It was just, I think, two years ago that the town meeting gave support, and we had the support of the selectmen at the time, to look at preserving and restoring it. We received money from CPC and from the state of Massachusetts to $54,000, in fact, between the two, to do a feasibility study, which we did. We hired an architect. We came up with some excellent plans. Admittedly, it would cost some money, but we knew we could do it in phases. Just to address a couple of points made, the building with the plans we had in mind would not be vulnerable to any significant damage. And I won't address those points. I'll just go on, letting you know that we put good money into coming up with a very good plan. We were ready to go to CPC. CPC needed a letter from the state saying that it is indeed a historic structure and therefore would be eligible for exemption from FEMA requirements to put it up on stilts. We didn't think putting it up on stilts would be a good idea, but we have other very solid, reliable mitigation measures in mind. We needed a letter from the state saying that it is historic and therefore would be exempt. Took us a long time to get the letter. It's very hard dealing with the state. Lot of hard work went into it. We got the letter that we were told we needed. A short time later, a town official told us, "Oh, I think you need another letter from another state agency." And we got that letter, but lo and behold, it's too late to bring it to the CPC committee. So we were not able to come back to the CPC committee last year to ask for construction funding. We had a plan to go forward with a phased approach that would have been affordable. So we could not go forward at that time. It effectively pulled the plug on the project because with domino effect, it jeopardized the opportunity for other grants as well. So here we are, a year later, a move to try to sell the building. Now, that's all very well and good, but think what that means. The valuation of that property is about $1 million. The land, it's a valuable spot, no question about it. The town might get that, and that's a drop in the bucket in the town budget. It would be gone in a flash. The land would be gone in a flash, and you'd lose that iconic piece of property with a view to motif number one. Now think what will happen when that land is sold. Who's going to buy it? First of all, if anyone who buys that land with that building is probably...
Ms. Lawton, just so you know, you have four minutes to continue, but just so you know.
All right, I'll finish up in a minute. They will likely tear it down to put up a residence. They will be required by FEMA to put it up on stilts, a multimillion-dollar residence up on stilts in Dock Square. Is that what we really want? Again, it begins to erode the commercial and the nature of that place. It would be better to have a park there that would be open to the citizens, in my personal view, but I think this is folly for the town to give away that kind of valuable property in that particular Dock Square central location. And by the way, it is a historic building that was used for decades as a firehouse and then for a number of cultural activities and events over the course of time. I would urge you to vote "no" on this article.
Thank you, Ms. Lawton. Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir. Reverend Ives.
I cannot be here tonight, Nathan Ives, 19 Owood Avenue. I cannot be here tonight in this uniform and not mention that Clifton Fears and Guy Tebow would be rolling in their graves about this. This is Rockport's first firehouse. And Police Station used to be... When I was a kid, you'd go down the side and see the bars still in the... For the cell and so forth. It is a historic site. There are many stories. If you go to Roger Martin's book and read all about that building and what it was used for and what transpired there, it's a special place right there at Motif. It ought to be saved.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sheila Becker, 107 Marmion Way. Is there an active potential purchaser of the property? There isn't?
So thank you for the question, and we'll get to that in a moment. Anything else, Ms. Becker, before you give that mic up? That's it?
Depends on what the follow-up...
Oh, okay. All right, we'll see how we go. We will return to the board on the motion. Any further discussion? One moment, Mr. Arsenian. Anybody who hasn't yet spoken at all today? Oh, she's... I mean, during the whole course of the meeting. All right, Mr. Arsenian, and I will get to you, Ms. Evans, as well.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The building is indeed a gem. It's also expensive and expensive to keep it up. People have different feelings about it. I asked the board of selectmen if we would know how much we could expect to get if we sold it. The answer, you know, would there be... To explain, if town property is sold, it has to be sold at auction. That's state law. Darrell Klein can explain to you the details at public auction. And the selectmen could set a reserve price. I wanted to know if we're going to sell it, you know, would there be a reserve price? No answer to that. The excuse or the reason being that if they get authorization to sell it, they would then go out and get an assessment, evaluation of the property and move from there. But obviously, if we think of selling it all, how much you're going to get for it is a major consideration. You wouldn't want to throw it away. We threw the Carnegie Library away. We threw the Story Library away. We threw the Pigeon Cove School away. We don't have a good record, whether that matters in your consideration or not. The other question you'd want me answered to and won't get, I asked, is what we would do with the money. In the first instance, and it's not a choice... In the first instance, and it's not a choice, the money goes into something called the Sale of Real Estate Fund, and there it lies until another town meeting, when we would all be asked what to do with the money, to appropriate it for one cause or another. So there's no question, answer to that question either, what we would do with the money. I have an answer to that, if we decide, if we decide we want to sell it, and that is very definitely, the money should go into the real estate fund. We never bother to put money into it. We should be putting money into it every year. If the money, you know, if it's sold, we're selling property and the money should go back into property, which doesn't necessarily mean indulging those who like to look at birds and wade in swamps. We might buy playing fields, we might buy a proper site for the Pigeon Cove Fire Station. We might do any number of things, although it's true that the price of property goes up and up and up, and the value of money goes down.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenian. Ms. Evans, and I'll get to-
Laura Evans, 77 High Street. It seems like a hasty error to go and sell, sell this building. I would like to see some options. Do we really need the million dollars as a town? And what other options could we vote on that we might do with this building, other than sell it to a private interest? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Tom Mekus, 73 Marmian Way, and Vice Chair of the Rights Away Committee. Note that there is a public right-of-way next to this building, and I certainly hope that that could be preserved if we indeed did sell this. And preserving that right-of-way, it might be worth less than you might think to a private owner to have that right-of-way there.
Thank you, Mr. Micus. Ma'am, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Seavy. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Jenny Amory, 8 Andrews Hollow.
I, I can hear you very well, but I'm not sure if the room can. If you want to wait for a mic, right to your left.
Hi, Jenny Amory, 8 Andrews Hollow. I'm also on the Board of Rockport Exchange, which has the Rockport Farmers Market. While I'm not talking on behalf of the Board, I just had questions about this. I know that there was a brief discussion about this at the August 29th Select Board meeting, and we're just sort of hearing about this now in terms of town meeting. I tried to come here tonight to have an open mind, to sort of think, you know, what would the town, the Select Board, be thinking about why they would want to sell this property? And at the same time, it is a resource, as Monica shared, in terms of a space that enables the farmers market to exist. And so, one of the questions that I had is that, you know, over the time that I've been a resident here, which is six years, I've heard the Select Board talk a lot about the need for space for the town in downtown. So I'm kind of puzzled, because I think Monica made such a clear argument about a plan that, that has existed and to be able to renovate and keep the building. So I personally have deep reservations about the decision based on her presentation and also the questions that I've heard about the Select Board, talking, in my experience, a number of times about wanting to have space in town, in town for meetings, organizations, even the, the, the town itself needing offices. So I, I think I'm going to vote no, based on what I've heard tonight, even though I wasn't sure what I would do.
Thank you, Ms. Amory. Mr. Seavy.
Charlie Seavy, 18 Frank Street. This is me speaking. These committees got nothing to do with this. I, I got really mixed feelings about this, because, you know, clearly, it's a historically significant building, and I wonder how much it's protected by that status. On the other hand, it's an old wooden building, and anybody that thinks the ocean isn't going to come calling one of these days is simply denying reality. And yet, on the other hand, I think I'm out of hands now. It's part of our quaint New England Village theme park that we're running downtown. You know, I've used that line before, but I think it's really something we need to consider in this. And my third point, or I don't know where we are, what's going to go in there? Is this another Hotel on White Wharf situation? You know, it seems to me, if the Board of Selectmen's going to sell this thing, they've got to make bloody sure that something non-obnoxious goes in there. Now, the Shaylon Lou, as you all know, replaced an existing building, but it pretty much looks, from the front, exactly like that old building, and I think they did a magnificent job at it. Now, if we're going to get rid of this thing, we've got to make very sure that it fits into the context of downtown and it looks like old Rockport, because, face it, folks, that's what we're selling to tourists. I'm, I'm really a little, you know, in, in the end, either it's going to cost a potload of money to keep that thing from disappearing into the ocean or rotting away, I have no idea. And nobody's mentioned any big money figures yet. I, boy, I don't know. I think in the end, I'm probably going to vote against this, but those are things we've really got to think about before we go and sell this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Seavy. Ms. Michaels, and I'll get to Mr. Reed. Do you want a mic, June? You can bring it back.
Okay, June Michaels, 22 Landmark Lane. I've been at this long enough to remember when we had the wonderful New Dengon Library, and the people in Pigeon Cove wanted to keep the old Pigeon Cove Library, and couldn't they have just the reading room and the mystery novels that they had before? Well, the town decided to sell it and put all the books in the Dengon Library, and now that's a private home kept in good repair. And then, the Carnegie Library. And we tried for several years to find something to do with the Carnegie Library, and finally sold it to be a private home where it is being kept up. One of the problems with the Carnegie Library, which also exists with this old firehouse, is the total lack of parking. Now, there are several other projects. Monica, the Building Study Committee, the DPW, the CPC, have been looking at what it would cost to repair and preserve this building. And we're talking a figure very similar to what the land might be worth. And it's small. It's on, in the storm zone, so if you raised it, it would look rather awkward on the, the road. It would stick out. And if you raised it, you would have a problem with handicapped access, because the entrance to the building is on that right-of-way. There's no place for a ramp. If you renovate a municipal building for public use, you must make it handicapped accessible. The second floor is quite nice. It's got a very good view, and it's got a nice tin ceiling, but if you renovate the second floor and make it available for public use, you need an elevator in it. The building is not big enough for an elevator. The space for gatherings is smaller than the friends' room of the library. It's smaller than either of the public rooms in the community house. It's just not big enough to have a municipal purpose that is so pressing it would be worth fixing it up. We have, it's a municipal building, there must be a need to use it in some way for us to spend the money on it. And believe me, this has been looked at many times. If the people at town meeting feel they haven't been given enough options, then we should table this and try again, and show people the options of what it would cost to repair, and what the problems are in fixing it up, and what the danger is from the storm damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Yes, sir? Oh, I, I'm sorry, hold on, I, I've got somebody before you, Mr. Reed. Sir, sir, just hold on for one moment. Mr. Reed, if you can get Mr. Reed that mic, and then we'll get to you, sir.
Bruce Reed, Pigeon Hill Street, and I'm speaking for myself, not the Board. You know, I've been on, well, I've been around here a long time, and I don't ever remember that building ever really being used. And it's been in disrepair for years, and as a Commissioner, I've been in and out of that building a lot of times, trying to figure out, how do we fix that building for not a lot of money? And there are a lot of problems in that building. And one of them is, if you go down to Wharf and you take a look at the harbor, and you take a look at the seawalls, that's the lowest seawall in town is in front of that building. So you've got to deal with the seawall as well as the building. And I couldn't agree more with June. I mean, I've seen numbers of 2.5 billion or more to fix that building up. This is a building we don't need. You know, this is a time to make a decision, to, to move forward. We have the community house, about less than a mile away up the street, even though that doesn't have some parking, it has some parking, and it's got two big rooms. So it's time to move on from this building. If you look at the building beside it, Lula's Pantry, that was a private investor who built that building. Wouldn't it be nice to have a building that looked that nice, instead of that wreck that we have there now? I mean, do we really want to spend a couple million dollars to fix that building up with all the other projects that we face in town? Personally, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And we are going to be going back to the Board at some point when we get questions wrapped up, sir, and then Ms. Brown.
Dan O'Donnell, 52 Main Street. It sounds like this is more, it's, I don't know how much it would cost to fix it up, but I, I thought I heard earlier that, that, that we had gotten permission to not necess, that it's not necessary that it be raised on stilts, that it needs a parking lot. And I don't know what it could be used for, but it really is a bit of an iconic building that, until we have a really solid, good alternative of what, what is going to happen there, I'd like to just see it stay, by time, until we have a more clear way of what we're going to do with it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Brown? If we could get that mic over to Ms. Brown? If you could come down here? Hold on, Pat, let him-
Pat Brown, 27 Haven Avenue. What I'm hearing is people are skeptical. They, they really don't know what they want to do with this property. So I would like to make a motion to refer this to study until the annual town meeting, and make a decision then, when we know what it would cost to repair the building and what we could do with the building.
All right, and hold on. First of all, I believe that has to be to a specific committee? In any event, on a motion to refer and refine the committee, is there a second? Second, okay, thank you. So, okay, point of order? It's not a motion to amend, it's a motion to refer. So, Ms. Brown, I take that as a motion to refer back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. And that's been moved and seconded? Any discussion on the motion to refer to committee? Yes, Mr. Brackett for the Board of Selectmen.
Ross Brackett, Board of Selectmen, 27 Main Street. The original motion is the authority to look into selling it. It's not to sell it. So in order to do a study to sell it, we need to have the authority to sell it. So the committee would be pointless in this sense, because we don't have the authority to look into selling it. Monica, Monica can attest that we already had a building study done to the building, so we can get numbers on that at a later date. I've been speaking to Chairwoman Wilkinson as well. We are going to visit this issue. The Board of Selectmen has not spoken at length about this or have any discussions on this issue, but all we are doing on the original motion was asking for the authority to sell the building. Doesn't mean we're going to sell it, doesn't mean we're going to put it up to the highest bidder. We can stop at any point. That was just an option that would give it, give us, to us, as we discuss this matter. It has nothing to do with that, but in the sense of the committee, I think the committee is not needed, as we already have the Building Study Committee with Monica as the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brackett. So the question on the floor is whether to refer the, refer the main, subject of the main motion back to the Board of Selectmen for further study. Does anyone wish to be heard on that question? Yes, sir?
Willie Workman, 85 Main Street. I'm confused. I think the, the motion, if I understand, if the motion was just to refer to the Selectmen, what's up here gives the Selectmen the authority to convey the parcel?
Yeah, so, and so, I understand, so let me see if I can-
Can you do that again with-
Let me see if I can clarify. The main motion is what you see here, and it's contained on Article U, which is to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey the parcel identified as stated in the motion. So it's to authorize the Selectmen to explore that, if I got it right? Do I have it right? To sell? Okay, okay. Right now, the next, the motion that's right now on the floor is to refer the whole issue back to the Board of Selectmen. I believe the comment was, they have studied it already and studied that question, but I'm going to go back to them. But the motion right now, before the meeting, made by Ms. Brown, is to refer the entire question back to the Board of Selectmen. That's the motion on the floor right now, which is debatable and would require a majority vote. So that's the question, whether to refer back to the Selectmen, and I'm going to return to them as well to clarify issues on that. Let me just see if there's any other questions, so you can do it in one fell swoop. Any other comments on the motion to refer back to the Board of Selectmen?
Laura Halliwell, 37 High Street. I'm not understanding whether Pat Brown's motion would keep them from selling it until the next town meeting.
So Ms. Brown's motion is to refer back to the Board. The main motion is to authorize the Board to sell. Right now, we're on the motion to refer back, and I am going to go back to the Board of Hold on. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Let me get bailed out by Mr. Klein.
Not true, but Darren Klein through the moderator. So the main motion, before Ms. Brown's motion, if passed, would grant the Board, the Select Board the authority to convey or sell the property. There was mentioned earlier that it would only be done by auction. That is incorrect. It is subject to the 30B bidding process, but it's not limited to auction only. That was the main motion before Ms. Brown stood up and made her motion, which is actually the motion on the floor. If Ms. Brown's motion carries, then the, the article would be disposed of, and the result would be that the Select Board would, would be tasked by town meeting to study the issue of conveying the property and come back to town meeting at the, at the annual town meeting. If that motion carries, that's the end of this article, and the Board would not have authority to sell the property. If Ms. Brown's motion fails, it would go back to the main motion, which again, would be to give the Board authority to actually sell the property.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. So going back to the motion on the floor, which is Ms. Brown's motion to refer back to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Pat Brown's motion may be in order, but I don't think it's right or fair to refer anything to any Board or committee without getting an end date, at which point it comes back here. Darren Klein said the Springtown meeting, but that wasn't part of the motion, and this happened before-
It, it was, and if I failed to state that, it was Ms. Brown's motion, and if I failed to state that when I repeated the motion, I apologize, but it was to refer and to come back to Springtown meeting.
I see. And the other thing that's missing with such motions, any motions, not necessarily this one, is whether, you know, you get a report at the end from the Selectmen, or whether you get a report and a chance again at the original article. So that question should be answered, because referring things to Boards- Because referring things to Boards is one way of burying them. And it says in the bylaws that you can defer things, but only to a time, a certain time. So this would be a way of burying things or putting them off indefinitely unless we have a date on the one hand and also a statement that you're going to again have a chance at the original article. We should have both.
Well, right now, the question is whether to refer. And as Mr. Klein explained, if that motion carries, we will not be doing anything further under Article U tonight. But that's the question on the floor, whether to refer back to, whether to refer the subject of Article U back to the Board of Selectmen to report back to town meeting. Is there any further discussion on that question? I'll get to you in a second. Yes, sir?
Rick Caston, 31 High Street. I'm concerned if we're just referring it to committee or back to the Board, what's, where are we going to get back? Because I've heard here discussing, you know, costs of maintaining the building, restoring it, what our options are, what the value of the price is. What are we referring them to do? They can just go back and say like, oh, look, we can get X for it. Or they could come back with tons of information. I'm confused. Like, if you just say refer to committee, what are we expecting back in return at the Springtown meeting?
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, sir?
David Kaplan, 14 Drummond Road. I sense that everyone's made up their mind and further sense that what people want is more time on this. And in the interest of not wasting people's time, if I'm right, if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but I recommend vote against Ms. Brown's motion because we've heard it doesn't really move things forward. But then vote no to give the Board the authority that will give us all time to regroup and study this further.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to refer the question back to the Board of Selectmen to be reported at the annual Springtown meeting? On this issue, I'm going to go back to the Board of Selectmen to clarify anything that has come up during discussion. Ms. Wilkinson.
Wow. Okay, so I think there's agreement amongst the Board or the majority of the Board that we are completely fine with referring this back to us for study. One member of the Board brought this issue to us, and I personally, I'm just speaking for myself now, I personally, I've always admired the work that Monica and the Building Study Committee have put into it. I personally would love to see the town think of something creative. And I was like, let's come to town meeting and see what people think. And this, to me, is like the purpose of town meeting and all coming together because, you know, seeing Nathan stand up here in his uniform and talk about the history of the fire department is like moving to me. And I'm like, the wheels are spinning. So we are happy to look into this further. I think that would involve looking into what would be involved in a sale because we haven't even had that discussion. So I'm happy to have the Board look into that, look into uses, look into what it would cost. I know we had a cluster with the timing last time on the historic stuff. I'm happy to kind of have us regroup, bring it back to the Board and discuss it, and then come back to town meeting. Hopefully, we can do that before Springtown meeting. We may have to come back for a little extension. I feel like I'm in high school. But we'll do our best. I think we definitely get the sense, I think we were, my thinking was if we came here and overwhelmingly town meeting was like, sell it, let's use the money and do something else, that would have made us like, that would have weighed heavily on us. But that's kind of the opposite of what we've heard tonight, and that's pretty cool. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Anything further on the motion to refer the question back to the Board of Selectmen? I sense you're ready to vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of referring the subject matter of Article U in the motion made thereunder back to the Board of Selectmen to be studied and reported on at the spring annual town meeting, say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We will now go to T for Tango, to be followed by P Papa, and then by V for Victor.
Mr. Moderator, Selectmen Vice Chair Ross Brackett moves that the town authorized the lease purchase agreement as provided in Article T as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant.
Moved and seconded.
Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion, which is on page 148.
Discussion? Any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. This requires a two-thirds vote, so we will go to electronic means. You've heard the motion is made by the town administrator, and you have the motion is contained on page 149, well, excuse me, strike that if I may, on page 148 of the Town Meeting Voters booklet. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. We're going to vote electronically. You'll have 12 seconds from when I say vote now. All those in favor of the motion, press 1 or A. All those opposed, press 2 or B. Vote now. That motion passes 90% to 10%, and the numerical count is 98 to 11. We'll go to P for Papa, followed by V for Victor.
Mr. Moderator, Selectmen Chair Sarah Wilkinson moves that the town approved Article P as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant and transfer $10,000 to be spent under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for purposes consistent with the settlement funding guidelines and potential uses as printed in the article. Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee support this motion, which is on page 146.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I sense you're ready to vote. This also requires a two-thirds vote to pass. You'll have 12 seconds. You will press 1 or A for aye. If you support the motion, you will press 2 or B for no. If you oppose the motion, you've heard the motion and you have it contained in page 146 of the Town Meeting Voters booklet. So all those in favor, press 1 or A for aye. All those opposed, press 2 or B for no. Voting now. Hold. Ah, we have a technical issue. All right. We'll try it by hand vote while that's being worked out, unless it's fixed. Are we fixed? We're not fixed. All right. Again, it requires a two-thirds vote. You've heard the motion under Article P and is contained in page 146 of the Town Meeting Voters booklet. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries by more than two-thirds. So we will go to V for Victor.
Mr. Moderator, Town Clerk Melanie Waddell moves that the town approved Article V as printed in the September 11th, 2023 Town Meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen support this motion, which is on page 149.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Go ahead. Ms. Waddell?
Just to clarify, because I know that the warrant wasn't very clear, but the acceptance of this MGL would allow any public office in the town of Rockport, if we chose to, to remain closed on any or all Saturdays. More specifically, it would allow the town clerk's office to treat Saturdays as a legal holiday when calculating filing deadlines such as voter registrations and submittal of nomination papers. Right now, with the change in 2022 in the Votes Act, the voter registration deadline used to be 20 days before town meeting or an election, and then they changed it to 10. This would only affect our local election because state and presidentials are dictated by the state. So if we have a Tuesday election, 10 days before falls on a Saturday. This change would allow us to bump it back to a Friday. It would still be the full day through 5:00 PM. The change would also not be complete. If we chose to stay open on a Saturday because we had a very big, highly contested election coming up, then we could choose to stay open and do voter registration on that Saturday. There are so many avenues for people to register to vote these days, whether it's online, by mail, at the voter registration, sorry, the registry of motor vehicles. And for the last three years, working in the office and having the annex staffed on a Saturday for people to come in person to vote in person, or sorry, register to vote, no one has ever come. So it's just one day out of the entire year that would just allow us to bump it back to a Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Waddell. Any discussion? I sense you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article V as contained in page 149 of your booklet and is stated by the town administrator, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, and it's unanimous, and I so declare it. Chair. Okay. First, before we do anything else, please, please, please remember to return your clickers, they won't work on your television anyway, to the desk in front of the hall. And with that, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.